So I think we will get started. So, welcome to today's meeting. In accordance with Executive Order N-2920, the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors meetings are being held virtually. You can participate via the Zoom call-in phone number, which is located on your screen and on the front of the agenda. So with that, Ryan, will you please do roll call?
Supervisor Bone?
Present.
Supervisor Wilson?
Here.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Here.
And Supervisor Bass?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And so, Ryan, now we'll switch over to the flag and we will... Please join me in saluting the flag. There we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and to visible liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you very much. So, little housekeeping before we go further. For those who plan to call in today and make comment, please press star nine when you are... We are on the item you'd like to comment on, and then you'll be asked to press star six. And that will unmute you. You will have three minutes to speak. And at two and a half minutes, you will hear this sound, which lets you know you have 30 seconds to finish up. So don't take it personally if you are thanked and then no longer available to speak, but we do appreciate everyone trying to be by the same rules. Also, if you are watching on the video or TV and you call in, please mute your... Or turn off your volume on your TV because it gets a little confusing because the sound on the phone is... There's a time delay to the TV, so it gets confusing. So just try to remember to do that when you call in. So, and also, I think it's important to try to have a break during the meetings for those at home and for staff and for the board. I think we'll try to aim for something around 11 o'clock. No guarantees, but that is what I'm going to shoot for. So I'd like to ask our CIO if there's any modifications to the agenda.
Good morning, Chair Bass. There are no modifications to the agenda this morning.
Thank you. Is there a board member who'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Is there a second? Okay. Someone's got a second. Okay, thank you. It's a motion and second.
Who was the second?
I believe it was Supervisor Madron. All right, so, good? Okay, so with that, we will open this up to public comment. And I do believe we have... Actually, I say, we have a retirement that we'd like to recognize today for Brenda Reynolds. And I do believe that we have someone here to make a few comments. Is that you, Mr. Binge?
Yeah, that's... Yeah, that's me. It's my turn.
That one, you get... Try to do it in three minutes, just so I can be consistent, okay?
Okay, I can do that. So, yeah, Brenda's retirement on Friday. 29 years with the county. And before that, I just found out this morning, she actually was on the sheriff's posse as a volunteer, 25 missions. So, you know, 30-plus years dedicating time to the citizens of Humboldt County and the community, and it's just awesome. We're gonna miss her here. I know I'm gonna personally miss her. I don't know who I'm gonna go to for my Excel help and WordPerfect help and just all the stuff that she steps up and does here in our sheriff's admin up here in the correctional facility. And, you know, it's not just recognized by me. She was voted... We were talking about it this morning. Voted multiple times as a civilian of the year. So she's recognized throughout her department with all of our deputies here in their correctional facilities. So I just want to thank her for all of her time. Thank her for all of her personal help that she's given me while I've been up here in admin and giving to our department.
All right, well, thank you very much. Very well said. And we will see if there's any other members of the public who'd like to make comments. And this time, there are new hands that are up. If you was to make comment, press star nine. Supervisor Bone, we'll go back to you soon as there's public comment. All right, no one has raised their hand, so we'll go back to the board. Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, I... Yeah, I don't want to hurt Bren... You know, hurt Jason's feelings or Ed Wilkinson's or anybody else's feelings. But if you wanted an answer for something in the jail, you just walked through the door, got it from Brenda. And I think Brenda's commitment to Humboldt County, along with her husbands and her families, just daughter that works here, I mean, is... Is pretty amazing. But, yeah, if you wanted answers, I don't know what Jason's gonna do. I know she's still gonna help out a little bit, but I... I just... Brenda is just that. I've known Brenda for long before I ever became a supervisor, and she's been committed to doing the job that she has been doing and doing so well at it. And when the time comes, which you no longer... She will be missed. She is, you know, big shoes to fill, is easy to say, but... And she always used to keep some treats around for the guys, too. I think they like that, too. So she has definitely put her shift in.
Yep.
Thank you, Supervisor Bone. And I've also been... I have the understanding that it is her birthday today. So I guess it's a birthday present to herself. So, sorry to see you leave. And I did not know about the family's commitment, so it's great that there's been such a commitment to Humboldt County. Any other supervisors have a comment either on retirement or on anything else on the consent calendar? I'm not seeing anybody. All right, well, with that, Ryan, will you do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Chair, thank you. Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
And Bone.
And Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Thank you. Passes five votes.
Thank you. So we will move on to public comment on items that are not on the agenda. This is the time where members of the public can call on items that aren't on the agenda, and no action will be taken or discussion had. But you will have your three minutes. If you're interested, please remember to press star nine. At this moment, there are no attendees with their hands up. So we will wait a moment here. Oh, we have a couple now. So this is for public comment on items not on the agenda. And so our first speaker ends on the last four digits, 3644, followed by 3053. And if you are... Okay, looks like 305... Okay, Ryan, which one are we unmuting first? 3644?
Sure, 3644 has been unmuted, and they just need to push star six to unmute themselves.
All right, so if you are 3644, just press star six, and you have three minutes to go. Welcome.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Kristin Orthgordineer. I'm a graduate student at HSU in the Environmental Science and Management Department, where I'm working with Dr. Lori Richmond's Human Dimension Research Lab. I'm also a planner at Greenway Partners, working with Alderan Laird and Humboldt County's long-range planning staff on a feasibility study funded by the Coastal Commission to look at regional coordination of sea level rise adaptation planning. As part of my thesis research, as well as the county study, we recently sent a survey to staff and elected officials of local agencies and organizations that might be involved in sea level rise planning. If you receive this survey from my HSU email, which is KMO29 via Survey Monkey, we'd really appreciate it if you participated in the survey. Your feedback could help inform how sea level rise planning is or isn't coordinated between the various jurisdictions on Humboldt Bay. We've had some technical difficulties with Survey Monkey, so if you haven't received the survey but are interested in taking it, please contact me. Again, my email is KMO29@humboldt.edu, or it might be in your spam folder. So if you can search for my email there, you may be able to find it. And I'll be sending out a reminder email soon with a link to the survey again. And if you haven't taken it yet, we greatly appreciate your input. And lastly, just for members of the public who may be watching this and are interested in sea level rise, the county also released a different survey. It's a public survey about sea level rise, and we'd love to hear your input on sea level rise and sea level rise planning. Even if you, you know, wherever you reside or if you don't live right on the coast, your feedback is still super valuable for our planning process. And if you're interested in sharing your thoughts with local planners, you can access the survey by Googling "open town hall Humboldt sea level rise" or on the county's Facebook page, or Loco posted it. A lot of people thought there, I think. So anyway, thank you for your time and hopefully your participation in the surveys. And if you have any questions, again, my email is KMO29. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristin. So our second speaker has the last four of 3053, and just press star six to unmute.
Good morning, Thomas Mulder here. I just want to confirm you can hear me?
Yes, Thomas.
Okay. Talking about MISRS taxes, it would be very, very nice to see the county implement 5% to 10% of that MISRS tax to go directly towards funding the roads department for structural improvements. We're not talking potholes. We're talking real overlays or proper culvert replacements and funnel those fundings towards where there's commercial activity that are using those roads, so that way the neighbors that are not cultivating are not negatively impacted and actually get benefits by these taxes. I've been driving around a little bit and seen quite a few damaged roads that need improvement. And I think it'd be a great way for the county to show that. It'd also be very nice for that MISRS money to be separated in the budget items, so that way it's clear as to what the tax dollars are doing. Another thing I'd like to add is my county road needs some improvement. I can file the paperwork... I've said this before. I can file the paperwork and get reimbursement for taxes and do it myself, but I'd also be willing to sign some papers if they put that much money into the county road that my neighbors utilize as well to forego that reimbursement from that lawsuit settlement. Would like to move forward on, you know, having... Not having people impacted negatively. And lastly, hopefully, before next year, somehow we can figure out a way for people to put in those bigger rain catchment tanks without having to pour a concrete pad. I know that's gonna take some work, but hopefully those of you that are concerned with drought conditions can work actively to allow people to put in larger water tanks without such an expensive permitting process and concrete scrubs. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
All right, thank you, Thomas. And our final speaker that has her hand up at this moment is the last four digits of 0151. Just press star six to unmute.
Good morning, Gotti Russell here. I'm calling about the Avenue of the Giants plan. I mentioned this several months ago. I haven't heard anything. So I'd like to have people pay a little bit more attention to what's happening and how we implement something for the whole avenue. And that's really important. Another thing is that we've mentioned some... Several people have mentioned about accessing the internet going down to San Francisco. I haven't heard anything that's pending on that as well. So I'd like to at least have some kind of update on these two things regularly, even at a... At the meeting or on the agenda, possibly just having a date that it's gonna be discussed or something will happen on it. Then there's still the issue of if people can live in a travel trailer or RV in Humboldt County. It seems to be unclear. The planning department is saying absolutely nobody can do that if they're not in a trailer park. And I know that there's thousands of people doing that. So I'd like a little bit of clarity on how that's gonna be handled and how it's gonna be implemented on the general plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Gotti. All right, so that is the last person we have. So we'll turn to the board and move on to the next item, which is our update on COVID-19.
Hold on. So this was time for... Is this the moment?
Public comment on non-agenda items.
So I have a non-agenda item, which is, you know, we have... I'd like to remind us that we're gonna... One of the folks, at least today, that we're gonna close in memory of is John Groby, constituent of mine for many, you know, for many years. And he passed, I think, a couple weeks ago. And he's a longtime supporter of the Vets Hall in Arcata, but also a professor at Humboldt State. Definitely a character that many people knew and both loved, and also, you know, he definitely had opinions. And I would say that there was... He's just a character. But more than that, he was a person who really put a lot of time and effort into his community in a lot of different ways and, you know, raised wonderful family. And I just, you know, he just had a lot of input into and a lot of time spent, you know, helping and maintaining the Arcade Vets facility. And so just wanted to, like, give a shout out to John because he's definitely someone I enjoyed conversing with and spending time with, and I know a lot of other people did, so thanks.
Thank you. Actually, and I want to say, and I'll go Supervisor Bone, I actually kind of like this idea of the folks we are journeying in memory of to do this during, like, a public comment period. It makes sense because I've seen here. So Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, I... Real quick on John, I don't think... I know I've been to... I don't want to count how many, but you did not go to a military funeral without John Groby being there. I think that was his far above being a character. He was... He paid so much respect to his military background and to those that have served. So I thought it was not fitting in any way at all but how he passed around Memorial Day because he... His whole life and being in the... Towards him was making sure that the veterans were respected the way they should. So thanks for bringing that forward. He was a true American. And then also, I got news this morning that Carol Delbiagio from Firdale passed, and we all know her sons, Dennis and Daniel, and grandkids and stuff like that. But I just... I just... It's a sad, sad day, and I could go on, but I'd start crying. I got to see her on Memorial Day. Dennis drove her to the service and got to hug her for one last time. But cancer sucks, and that's all I can say. But I'm going to miss that woman. She was... She was larger in life, but she now reunited with her husband, who passed away recently also. Again, cancer sucks. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just also wanted to give a very brief comment about John Groby. He was my professor at Humboldt State back in 1974. He taught economics. And, you know, as young natural resource students, one of the requirements in our major was a class called Economic Considerations in Natural Resources. And I just have to say that it was probably one of the most valuable classes I took in my entire college career. And John, you know, he was head of the Republican Party for a long time, and I just have such great respect for him. He, you know, for you guys, whenever you hear me talking about incentives and carrots and sticks, you can thank John Groby for that. So he's the one that first taught me those primary lessons in economics. And I wish, you know, his family all the condolences and prayers and sympathy for his loss. But I just wanted to speak very highly of John Groby. Thank you, Mike, for bringing him up.
Thank you. And this is when you realize that you have a lot more in common than we doubt at times when John Groby is somebody that we, I think we've all mostly known, perhaps not all. But, yeah, he was a professor of mine as well. And at the time, I'd known him before that because my father-in-law was a professor, Tom Waddle, who's also gone. A lot of the old professors are gone now. But, yeah, through many iterations, whether it's through the military or waiting on John and his family, I truly missed. He was a really good guy, and I was very sad to see that this morning. All right, so we've all done our comments on items not on the agenda, unless Supervisor Bushnell had anything she wanted to add. Nope, all right. Okay, so with that, we will move on to our special presentation, and we're having an update on COVID-19. There's a lot of changes happening, and I'm looking forward to this. Welcome, Dr. Hoffman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks, everyone, for having us back today to give the update on COVID. So we're rounding the corner on a surge in COVID-19 cases in Humboldt County, and we're hopeful that the end is in sight. This is the last surge we'll see in this pandemic. The case rate today is half what it was a few weeks ago, and test positivity rate is about half as well. This is great news. With over 70,000 people in Humboldt County now with at least one shot of COVID-19 vaccine, we will remain in the orange tier for the final week of the blueprint metric, which will be retired on June 15. We continue on the path towards full statewide reopening on June 15, after which only a few of the public health protective measures will still be in place. The COVID-19 vaccine, that's open to everyone 12 years and older, and masking for those who are unvaccinated. Over the past few weeks, we've seen our vaccination numbers increase, albeit slowly. Decreasing case rates are likely due to the progress of the vaccine winning out over the COVID-19 cases. We will eventually get to a place where there are not enough people left for the virus to infect because our vaccination rates will be high enough. But we are not there yet. Unfortunately, recent seroprevalence data from CDPH shows that the northern region of California has the lowest seroprevalence in the state at 46.9%. Statewide seroprevalence is at 72.1%, and seroprevalence is the measurement of antibodies in the bloodstream. While this is not a perfect measure, this does reflect a combination of both vaccination and natural immunity from infection. And only increases in the vaccination or natural infection will get that number higher. Get it to a place where the virus will have a much harder time to continue to circulate in our community. With our current vaccination rate of those who have had at least one shot at 61.9% for Humboldt County compared to 65.9% statewide, we still have work to do. So June 15 is only a week away, and we're getting questions about what things will look like. Many updates to guidance have come out in the past few weeks. So this is a recap of what we know so far. One, masking recommendations will align with the CDC, which means that in most settings, unvaccinated persons can go without a mask indoors and outdoors. Those who are unvaccinated should continue to mask in any indoor setting outside the home and in some crowded outdoor settings where physical distancing is not possible. Unvaccinated people will also be required to mask by Cal OSHA regulations that oversee the workplace. These Cal OSHA regulations also state that masking is required of everyone in the workplace or workspace if there are any unvaccinated individuals there. Employers will need to determine how to implement these new recommendations in their workplace. Some employers may also require customers who are not regulated by Cal OSHA standards to wear a mask since it will not be possible to know who is vaccinated or unvaccinated. There are also settings in which everyone will be required to mask regardless of vaccination status, like on public transportation, healthcare settings, schools, and other congregate settings. Distancing recommendations go away in most every setting after June 15. This means that capacity in public places like retail, restaurants, theaters, other venues can go back to pre-blueprint, pre-pandemic capacity. However, again, Cal OSHA regulations continue to require distancing in workplaces among the workers until July 31. So this may impact implementation for some workplaces. Certain employers may decide to keep distancing recommendations for customers as well, but it's not required by the general CDPH guidance any longer. Testing is still recommended in some settings, but less frequently than in the past. In general, fully vaccinated individuals do not need to test for COVID-19 unless they are required to do so for work or if they have symptoms consistent with COVID-19. This includes someone exposed to COVID-19 who is fully vaccinated. They do not need to test unless they develop symptoms or are required to do so for work purposes. Cal OSHA standards do not require a fully vaccinated worker who is exposed to COVID-19 to be excluded from the workplace unless they have symptoms. In healthcare settings where 75... 70% of staff and residents, if it's a residential facility, are fully vaccinated, routine surveillance testing of the fully vaccinated staff does not need to continue. Only unvaccinated staff would be required to continue with weekly surveillance testing. Overall, testing recommendations are reduced in many circumstances. And finally, youth settings will continue to be more restrictive than in other settings because of the fact that there's no vaccination yet in those who are under 12. So settings such as schools, camps, daycares, youth sports will all still require masking after June 15, given that the vaccine is not available yet. And these masking requirements will likely continue into the fall as schools reopen fully with no reduced schedules and no reduced capacity. So it's been a really long and difficult year dealing with COVID-19 for all of us. Public Health wants to thank everyone in our community for all that they've done to get us through this difficult time. Public health restrictions have impacted everything from our economy, our schools, our workplaces, and all of our institutions. We're looking forward to less restrictions going forward past June 15. We will continue to use important COVID-19 reduction measures to keep from seeing resurgence of the virus. But they are changing from those broader public health restrictions to those that are less restrictive. Increases in vaccination rates, use of masks in select settings that are of higher risk, and judicious use of COVID-19 testing to slow the spread among the unvaccinated in settings of higher risk like workplaces, congregate settings, crowded settings. Those will be our tools going forward to keep COVID-19 rates lower and keep our workplaces, schools, and other public places safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hoffman. Any board members have a question for Dr. Hoffman? Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, you said something about employers or businesses may require masks, but they may not require distancing. And in a... Can a public business... I'm gonna call from a lot of businesses. Some are gonna still have or ask for a mask. Can they require a mask after it is decided that masks aren't required? Can a individual require that? That's what people are asking.
Yes. Yeah, so business can require a mask for their customers if they desire... You know, just... It's like any other... Right, you know, if a business says you have to wear shoes, you have to wear a shirt to come in, they can also say you have to wear a mask.
That was health code, but, okay, all right.
Anyone else at the moment?
And then... The only other one is since... And I've asked this before, and I don't seem to get a straight answer. Does a state emergency order cover us? And can we get out of our local state order? Because I'd love to have you guys maybe kick back your hours a little bit for our CNM employees and, you know, get off having to work so many hours because we still can jobber this out as we drop this surge. Is that a possibility? I know we're hanging on to it, but it looks like everybody else is saying, "Ah." So I don't know.
Looks like we might have Ryan on for that.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Supervisor Bone, from what I understand, if the county revokes or rescinds our emergency proclamation, our availability for CDAA and Stafford Act funding end at that date that we rescind it. So the state essentially makes us eligible for that funding, but if we say we're no longer in an emergency, they won't cover the cost of ongoing response efforts.
And with that, Ryan, do we have not enough people in place? Or are we... Is that still costing us? We still don't have the 25... We're not... We're still not paying for the beds out at Redwood Acres, right, that we paid for?
No. So those were actually acquired through disaster logistics at the state. So we didn't accrue a cost for the equipment. And we're currently working on getting those picked up by the state logistics team, I believe, next week on the 15. So all of that is being demobilized, broken down, returned. And then really, the ongoing costs to the county are gonna be staff overtime, which is 100% reimbursed through FEMA now, and any supply and material acquisitions that are not grant-funded.
I'm just trying to figure out 14 months later I'm just trying to figure out 14 months later if we can help our staff out, get away from all this overtime, you know, the regular staff at our C and M, so they don't... I mean, are we at that point? It seems like it's not going away. So are we just staying in this forever, I guess, is what I'm asking?
So we are working on demobilizing the emergency operations center and transitioning the response management over to Department of Health and Human Services, Department Operations Center. And with that, we're going to see a reduction in staff. We're going to see a little bit less hours for some of the management confidential staff that have been working on this. And essentially, working on transitioning response management into somewhat of a day-to-day type response for DHHS and public health. So I think we are at a point where the response is starting to get normalized into regular county business. There's going to be ongoing vaccinations and some expenditures directly to COVID. And having that emergency proclamation in place will allow for full reimbursement of that in addition to the grants that DHHS has gotten to support the COVID response.
Okay, I just, we're going to run out of ink sometimes, and I don't know where all the money's going to come from. So, and I know it's reimbursed, but we're giving them the money to give back to us. So I'm just simple.
If I could just add something quickly. For a long time during this pandemic response, we didn't receive any additional funding until fairly recently. And so the positions, the extra help positions that we've hired and the overtime costs are covered through grants that we've received from the state through the federal government since that happened. So I personally, as a director, am less worried about the overtime costs for staff at this point because we have this additional funding that's come through the state from the federal government. So it's less of a concern in terms of our public health budget.
I fully agree, Michelle. I'm just saying, grant money is still tax money. I mean, it's still coming. The money's still coming. It's not magic money or pixie dust. And I mean, sometime, we're going to run out of this for roads, for old people's health later on down the line, a lot of other services that I'm just, to make sure we're doing it as wisely as possible. I'm just asking, because people ask me, why are we still in it?
Sure, and I'd say that there aren't many management and confidential staff that are working this incident and working that as there once was, luckily, which is the way that we would expect to see it in a pandemic winding down.
Yeah, and, you know, we've continued to wind down the services over the past few months and have plans to continue. We have, you know, cut the lab services back to five days a week. We're working on a plan to get investigations back to Monday through Friday, nine to five. So that's, you know, that's going to be a big change coming up in the next probably month or so. So we're working towards, you know, also getting people back to their regular day jobs. A lot of folks are, you know, have been away from their day jobs for almost a year now, and we want them back. And so I think with the latest numbers that we're seeing, if this is the end of it, then we're looking good. You know, the key to getting there is to get those vaccination rates up. That's really our last big tool that we have to get this thing over.
Thank you.
Supervisor Wilson?
Thanks, through the chair. I was kind of wondering, some of what I hear often is folks just really concentrate on the, even though it's going down, but we're still having, even just yesterday, we had someone reported as died of COVID in their 50s. Here I am, so I can relate to that. And when I talk to some folks who are, you know, have some issues with that, they really oftentimes just look at this disease as to what, if you don't die, then you're fine. Like, everything's all good. Like, and I, maybe if we're going to still continue to do reporting of these rates, I think hospitalization rates and having at least a... Even though I know you guys aggregate those by the week, that we have a pretty good reminder of those aggregates because people in hospitals is still, you know, if you don't want to get this disease, there is a prevention to it. This is a preventable, this is a deadly and preventable, a serious and deadly and preventable disease. And the best prevention currently is vaccination by far. And so there isn't, so, and where we've had a narrative before, which was, you know, about why people were getting sick and why people were dying and, you know, and concern about that in a way. Now, because we are in a phase where it is preventable, it's either if people are dying or going to the hospital, either it's a failure of us as, you know, as a governance institution to not deliver the vaccine to people, or it's a failure of individuals to receive the vaccine. It's one of, I mean, we're doing our best, and there's, I mean, there's a little bit in the middle there, for sure. But we, you know, I think we just need to deliver, you know, keep delivering that this is a preventable, dangerous, and deadly disease. I mean, and so, going back to my original question, which is, can we, at least if we're still maintaining these updates, can we have, you know, hospitalization rates in there? Because I think, again, people just assume that you either die or you're, or nothing's wrong. You know, no impact.
I think what I'm hearing you say, I'm sorry, through the chair, if I may. I think what I hear you saying, Supervisor Wilson, is we list the hospitalization as a cumulative total, and it's updated weekly. So instead of having it as a cumulative total, where you'd have to look at the previous week's number and do the math, it would be for that week, how many people have been hospitalized with COVID-19? So that, it's still an accumulative total for the entire pandemic, but for that week, we would know how many for that week were hospitalized. Is that right?
That's correct. I think it would be helpful that we have at least, you know, in the kind of current timeframe, you know, how many people are being hospitalized? Because being hospitalized, as we all know, is terrible. No one likes it. Anyone who's been hospitalized does not want to do it again. And anyone who's had, dealt with people in their family and friends who have been hospitalized do not want it to happen to them. And I think that it's, we are not relating to that as still happening, right? I mean, that's the part I think we're not grasping in this context. And it's all people who are unvaccinated that are going to the hospital. It's all people who are unvaccinated that are dying, right? And those are all preventable, right? In this current context, for the most part, unless there's, you know, slipping through the cracks and other things. Again, it's like, either institutionally, we have things to work on, or individuals have things to work on, but it is preventable. We've had a vaccine for a good amount of time. We really need to, I think, up our game in stopping the preventable impacts.
All right, thank you, Supervisor Wilson. I have a question, but I don't know if somebody else has a question first? Yes, Rex?
I think it's been, but where does the state get their hospitalization numbers? Because I know they list nine people hospitalized. Do they, do they do that on their own, or do we give them that information?
No, they get that from a hospital survey that's done daily and submitted to CDPH.
Do we do the hospital survey, or they do it? The state does it?
Each hospital is required to submit that daily to CDPH.
Okay.
And then we also keep our own local tally based on what we know. Because there's usually some delay and some lag, and we do a little extra double checking of those to see which ones are COVID. And, you know, sometimes they're positive COVID tests on admission, but they're not really there for COVID, so we take those out of our local reporting.
And then, and that's a good point for clarification. When you said that they go into a hospital for gallbladder surgery, but they test positive COVID, and then they end up, they're already there, whatever it gets me. Is that the same thing if they're in surgery for a gallbladder and they happen to die but have COVID? They become a COVID-related death? Is that the same scenario? They died with COVID, they didn't die from COVID? It's always with COVID?
Our local reporting of deaths, it would exclude any of those because we look at every case, and if it wasn't directly related to the COVID diagnosis, the death wasn't directly related to the COVID diagnosis, we would not report that as a COVID death.
Perfect. That's a fallacy that runs rampant out there that should probably be...
Yeah, and I mean, I think we have better controls on that at the local level, and we have, you know, done review of all of these cases, the hospitalizations and deaths locally. You know, statewide data and national data is much harder to control for because it's a much bigger data set.
And fear, the number one source of fear is lack of knowledge. And we need vaccines. But I mean, like I said, I've still got my stack of stuff. I get sent to me every day about growing different parts of my body and everything else if you take the vaccine. Hasn't happened yet, I look every day. But the thing is, that's what we have to get out there, is that information. Because as you say, albeit slowly, there are people out there that just not believe it in the long term and everything. And, you know, it came out quickly, but it was extremely studied. You know, so I just think education, education will ease the fears of the public. Of the public that will get this. We're going to, this is Humboldt County, and you're going to find out. We have a problem in our schools with kids being unvaccinated. It's a problem everywhere. So, and it's, for whatever reason, I'm not saying they're right or wrong. They have their joys and they have their beliefs. I'm not saying that. But if they're more educated, and maybe they have fully educated themselves, but there is a little bit of that.
No, and those are great points, Supervisor Bone. And just to touch on a couple of those, you know, the vaccine was created an unprecedented amount of time. The science behind it, though, goes back decades, really. I mean, we, you know, first started learning about the mRNA vaccines back in the 1980s. The original research was done into those. We, so they're not brand new. We've known about SARS coronaviruses for also, you know, going close to 20 years. It was in the early 2000s when we first started, we had the first SARS. And coronaviruses were studied before that, but, you know, certainly that renewed a lot of interest in them. So there was a lot of data and scientific investigation into the coronaviruses and the SARS coronaviruses. So, you know, and I think these are quite amazing vaccines. They are not amazing enough to change your DNA or do other strange things to you. They, there are very simple components to them that really go away after the shot with, you know, within a few hours. They're made up of things just like food you put in your body. They're made up of fats and sugars and acids and things that stabilize it, but they break down just like all the, you know, fats and sugars you put in your body every day when you eat. So the mRNA message that goes into your body, you know, gets broken down very quickly, and it doesn't stick around. The only thing that sticks around is your long-term immunity to fight this virus if you see it again. And one other thing on just, you know, the numbers and the hospitalizations and the deaths is, you know, so we've had 4,000 or over 4,000 cases of known COVID-19 in our community, and over 40 of those have died. We've had over 190 in the hospital with known COVID-19 complications. But of 70,000 people who've been vaccinated, none have gone to the hospital and none have died from that vaccine. So I think those numbers speak really loudly and speak for themselves.
And I think those numbers need to be spoken louder, almost put that down because that is such a powerful statement that I don't know. It's, I mean, it's great, we're hearing it, we know it, but, you know, and I fully support it and believe it. That doesn't mean I can force somebody else to believe it. But coming from the position you guys are, and you put out a daily news thing that says everybody's vaccinated, we still have had not. I mean, people have got sick. There are people getting sick after they get it, because that means it's working, you know? And that's the problem. It's not as bad in as older folks, it is the younger folks because they have a higher immunity, who are going to push back from it. But I just think the more information on a daily basis, I know it's, we got 40 cases, we got 30 cases, but we don't have any cases today from anybody that's been vaccinated. If you follow that up with every time, I just think that's such a powerful statement. We don't have anybody hospitalized that's been vaccinated. It just screams out, and we can scream it to the 20 people we talk to every day, but you guys have a voice in the media that I... Coca-Cola, McDonald's, and all those guys, they get a saying, they stick with it if it works. I think that's what we have to do, is we've got a statement, as long as it doesn't break, so.
Supervisor Madron?
I know nothing about media, but I just, my thought.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hi, my name is Steve Madron, and I am vaccinated. Been vaccinated for three months, and I am very grateful for that increased protection. I mainly just wanted to say thank you to Dr. Hoffman and Director Stevens and everybody, Ryan Derby and just everybody, for the incredible work over this last 14, 15 months. It's been a long haul, and so that's all I really wanted to say was, thank you, Humboldt community, for all you've done to try and help us all keep it together here. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Madron. And I did have some questions, I'll follow them now. Okay, then some more came up during the discussion. I'm curious, I have heard recently, you know, I mean, there are younger people in the hospital. I know the case where someone's had like a very bad COVID illness, you know? And they're young. So are we putting out more than information that you two can go to the hospital even if you're young? Because I heard this from some young people who, because of this, are all, you know, they're going, okay, we're getting vaccinated, because we've seen what it's done to our friend. So, you know, what are we seeing there? Are we still finding a huge reluctance in the, a percent, you know, a certain age group, maybe?
Yeah, the age group that is having, I mean, we're seeing the lowest vaccination rates, and it's definitely the under 30. Again, we don't know all the reasons for that. There are, there can be many, some of which could be transportation, could be time lost from work, could be some of the barriers about knowledge, like, you know, should I really get a COVID-19 vaccine when COVID-19 is not that bad? It just causes a little mild cold, or most people don't even get any symptoms. You know, but I think, again, going back to some of those numbers that we just talked about, yeah, can combat that. And if you look on our, on the dashboard at the Humboldt Health Alert, you can see that there have been hospitalizations in younger folks under the age of 30. There certainly have been a lot of people under the age of 30 who've gotten sick from this, much, much sicker than they would have, you know, from the vaccine. And then there's long COVID, long haul COVID, which is definitely something that is out there, and it's real, and people are studying. And it's not really a public health issue. It's more of a medical issue, and I think we'll start to see more data on it as time goes on. But certainly, that's something that I think young people should be concerned about and should take into consideration. So, public health, we're trying to make sure that we can break down those barriers by getting knowledge out there, getting information, working with organizations that can help us get information about the vaccine out, get vaccine clinics out in more outlying areas, going to schools in the coming months and into the fall months, and then also working to get the vaccine into every pediatrician and doctor's office that wants it. So those are some of the ways that we're really working towards trying to break down the barriers and get it accessible to everyone.
And what I wanted to follow up with is, there are a lot of local businesses who are being very creative and encouraging their employees. They're not telling them they have to, but I've been hearing some that are really going out of their way to try to make it, you know, known, we really like you to do this, we can't make you do it, but, you know, they're having contests and stuff. So I think people are really trying to find ways to reach out to folks who may be looking for something different. Maybe they're not worried about getting sick, but maybe it's something else that could talk them into doing it or... could talk them into doing it or encourage them. And also workplaces, do we have, um, have you been, have we been doing, uh, mobile clinics at some of the larger, like outdoor, I was at, I was over looking at a soils company the other day that had like 100 plus, maybe 200 people, just tons of people. Are we going and doing outreach like that, some of our mobile, our mobile, um, events?
Yeah, we have, we've been to, uh, several large companies. Um, we have gotten requests from a few others. Um, there's now a state-based, uh, website where people can put in a request if they're a business and they want to have a vaccine event. We, um, we have a, our mobile team now collecting those requests and, um, putting together a schedule and have pretty much scheduled it out for the next few months. And, you know, if we continue to get more and more requests, then we can, you know, try to expand that mobile unit and get, uh, you know, some other resources to help fill in. Um, but yeah, so there's, uh, we put out a press release, uh, probably a couple of weeks ago on that, um, you know, something to, but if people want to look for that, just go to the CDPH, um, website and, and you can sign up for a mobile vaccination effort at your workplace or, uh, organization, um, community-based organization, uh, faith-based organization, whatever, you know, whatever organization you have, um, put in that request and we'll do our best to fill it.
Well, and I'm thinking, working with the Chamber of Commerce and stuff to get the word out would be helpful. And then the last thing, this is the real question I had today, but didn't, I came here with it. Um, I'm reading this, the guidelines that have come out of Callosia. I mean, I think I sent you several emails and it is confusing, but I thought I read in some of that, that if someone is, um, does not wish to say if they're vaccinated or not vaccinated, then the business needs to assume that they are unvaccinated. And I thought I had read that if there's anyone unvaccinated or assumed to be unvaccinated, everyone in the workplace had to, workspace had to wear masks. So I'm not hearing that from you today, so is there a way you can clarify that, you know, what that really is? Or maybe later today you can just get back to me on that? Cause it's, um, the way they phrase things is really, um, interesting to try to decipher.
Yeah. No, you're absolutely correct. Um, that, that is the, the way it's written and the way to read it. So if you, um, do not disclose your vaccination status, you're assumed to be unvaccinated and will, and should be treated that way. Um, and in a workspace, so not, not entirely the, not the entire workplace, you know, but if you're in a, a space maybe of cubicles or a larger office with maybe 10, 15 people or whatever, um, it may be if any one of those people in that workspace is unvaccinated, then everyone in the workspace has to wear a mask. Um, so it's only in settings where every single person in the workspace, uh, is fully vaccinated that, um, people can go without a mask. Continue to be able to in your own private office, um, where you're not around other folks, um, but those, yeah, that's the, the way the regulation is written.
Well, and I think that's important to get out to businesses because that could impact, that can impact their operations if one does not want to divulge. Um, it's just, it's kind of a strange situation. Uh, Director Lee?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, Honorable Board Members. Um, I'd like to say thank you so much for, um, the ability to dovetail here with Dr. Hoffman's and Director Stevens' comment, uh, regarding the COVID plan update. Um, as you will recall, back in, um, on May 11th, 2021, um, the County Administrative Office came before your board with a series of recommendations in anticipations of June 15 reopening. And what does that mean for us specifically here, the County of Humboldt as an employer? Um, in that report, we share with you, um, we're still waiting for the Callosia COVID temporary standards update. Um, County HR just received a series of that last Thursday. We are working with our public health partners, trying to really decipher, really the interpretations of Callosia temporary standards. Um, because we are county entities, we're also being, you know, heavily regulated with many, many employment laws. And back in May, um, I shared with you that 14 months ago, it was very easy for us to turn off the switch because we literally have to shut down. We really need to do what we need to do to stay safe and to help the entire community. But here we are 14 months later, tremendous work have been made, tremendous progress, and I stand here, you know, side by side with our public health, um, service providers to provide County HR for myself and my team, the specific guidance so that we can navigate through the various guidelines of California Public Health, the EOC standards, the employment laws, the labor requirements, and now the Callosia standards. So on top of this, Callosia also imposed what we call a COVID prevention plan. So, back June last week, when Callosia distributed its guidelines, it's still not official because it has not been voted by their board. And that vote will take place in the next 10 calendar days and we anticipate there will be more provisions to that temporary standards and some of those provisions will now have to be rolled into July 31st. Um, so just if you, if I may step back, in that May meeting, your board directed staff to come back to your board specifically to address what is this June 15 reopening efforts will look like for the county, or specifically for the workforce? And what that is reopening will look like with respect to convening the meetings in the board's chamber and also to develop a, a set of recommendations of teleworking policies. I came to here with your board knowing that next, next Tuesday is the June 15th and my staff and I are still navigating and digesting those standards. We will continue to look into those policies and will return to your board as soon as administratively possible to ensure that our, we as a county, as a workforce is in compliance with the varieties of regulations. While California Public Health provides the guidelines, as the employer under the counties with government entities and regulated agencies were mandated by Callosia. And when Dr. Hoffman said that there are so many interpretations and what is that interpretations will look like, my team and I, along with Director Michelle, uh, Director Stevens, Dr. Hoffman and I were putting together, uh, what we call it, a COVID prevention plan ad hoc committee number two, to kind of reevaluate the 36-page documents that we put back in the fall and now to incorporate all of this new Callosia standard. And I ask for your patience as we continue to digest these materials because we want to make sure that we move forward in reopening in a safe, judicious and slow, methodical, thoughtful way so that we can also exercise first and foremost, safety protocols for our customers, clients coming into the workplace, but also for our employees coming to work and be safe and be protected. Um, so that's kind of my verbal report back to all of you. I plan to return to your board as soon as I have all of these materials reviewed, analyzed, assessed, and come back with a set of recommendations of how, what does that reopening efforts will look like here for us as a kind of Humboldt as the employer. We are 19 departments, but we are one singular employer and we are the kind of Humboldt. And so I just want to share with you those remarks. I'm available for any questions regarding employer related to the, uh, kind of Humboldt. Thank you.
Thank you Director Lee. And are you saying that if they're not gonna vote for another maybe 10 days and we have, the 15th is like a week from today that we likely, you know, it's not like all of a sudden everyone can throw their masks aside on the 15th and come into the office, you're saying?
That is correct. And again, this is, this, this is based on what Callosia, back in fall of 2020, when Callosia Board was going through these iterations and reviewing various policies at the national level, um, California, Callosia did not implement a requirement of COVID prevention plan late in the fall with, you know, with a retro, with, with a retroactive date. So my staff and I, along with our public health partners, basically put a lot of hours to digest their expectations and develop what we call a Callosia COVID prevention plan. The news release that was sent out last week by the Callosia Board basically say this is the draft, this is for everyone's to review in anticipations of the reopening efforts as called for by Governor Newsom. But the standards are expected to go into effect no later than June 15th, if, if is the key word, approved by the Office of the Administrative Law in the next 10 calendar days. So it could change. Further down that line in that news release, there are some provisions in that, in those standards that say will go into effect starting on July 31st. So there is now a lapse period between June 15th and July 31st, which are the standards that will be implemented now, which will be implemented post-July, June 15th and what implementations will go post-July 31st. So there are a variety of tasks that County HR and Public Health will have to collaborate and continue to have that dialogue to ensure that moving forward, we take great care to exercise the, the standard of care for our county workforce, not only for our workforce, but for our, any customers coming into our workforce because we are mandated to provide a safe workplace environment. And I will refer, I would defer that to Director Stevens or Dr. Hoffman to add on to their interpretations of this news release from Callosia Board last week. Thank you.
Thank you Director Lee.
Thanks Director. Yeah, I'll, I'll add on, um, there are many parts about June 15th that are gonna be extraordinarily confusing for everyone. Um, employers are only one group that are gonna be struggling to understand what life is gonna look like after June 15th. Um, I, I, I think the big key takeaways for what Callosia voted on last week are that they are going to allow for fully vaccinated people in a workspace to take a mask off if everyone in that workplace, um, workspace is fully vaccinated and, and then it's really up to each employer to put that into action, either, you know, verifying the vaccination status or requiring everyone to wear a mask because their vaccination status is unknown. Um, and, uh, Director Lee is also correct that there could be changes coming ahead. Um, they did say that, um, there, you know, this was provisional, that there might be changes down the line. I, I'm hopeful they won't change it before June 15th because that would really make it difficult to implement. Um, the other things that change on June 15th are the allowance for, um, people who are fully vaccinated to not have to test if they were exposed or exclude from the workplace. And I think that's a big one because, um, a lot of people, um, might be exposed in their workplace even, um, to, you know, we're, what we're seeing right now is fully vaccinated people working next to vaccinated people getting exposed and having to exclude from the workplace so that those folks would not have to do that going forward with these new Callosia standards. Um, so it would allow for those who are fully vaccinated, uh, to not have to exclude from the workplace. Um, what the July 31st, uh, change is about, it's about physical distancing. Physical distancing does not change in workplaces on July 15th, uh, which, or sorry, June 15th, um, which means for some workplaces, that might be difficult for them to bring back a full workforce if they don't have allowances for, uh, physical distancing, um, and barriers and whatnot that are called for in the Callosia, uh, emergency temporary standards. Um, but those will go away, the distancing and physical barriers will go away July 31st. So it would give time for, um, employers to prepare for that, those changes in the workplace, um, without physical distancing, but masking will still be a requirement for those who are not fully vaccinated, um, going forward. After, after, continue to be a requirement after July 31st. So hopefully that helps to clarify a little bit, um, what we know so far and, um, you know, certainly does leave still some ambiguity in that they could add on or change some of it, you know?
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Hoffman. Um, I don't know, my internet is unstable, so I'm not sure who's actually, if you can hear me or not.
Mine is, mine is too.
Not?
Hey.
Can hear you.
Okay, yeah, I think it's everybody.
Yeah. I was wondering, uh, Director Stevens or, or Dr. Hoffman or whatever, and, and we keep talking about how slow the vaccination rates are and things like that. Is this the time we maybe double down and maybe we take, we, we get impactful? Maybe we talk to somebody that's, as somebody mentioned, these younger people that are getting it, that have got a serious case of it and come out and say, I wished I was vaccinated, I had it, I'm, I'm still having issues. And people, when confronted with it, you know, because you always hear it's only old people dying, it's only this, and it's, it's a big difference. The 50-year-old yesterday I know was, I've, I've known a couple that have, have, have gone and it just, it, it's bad. And if you talk to people this weekend, I talked to a couple of people that had spent time in the ICU and they're still recovering and it was the, obviously it's scary being the ICU, but breathing through a straw, they said would have been wonderful. It wasn't even that. So I'm, I'm just saying, um, that maybe, maybe we, we hit it with a, with a hard hit saying, you don't want this with somebody that's had it. Reality sets in basically, I don't know.
I'd say that's certainly one, one approach. Um, it's tricky because we don't track and follow people after they've recovered from COVID and they're right, and public health doesn't, their primary care provider, their doctor would. And so we don't know who are, who folks are who are considered long haulers, um, on a case-by-case basis. I don't know, Dr. Hoffman, that, that would be hard for us unless we put an ask out there and we ask for folks that would be willing to, yeah.
It, it's not hard if it's a, if it's a, if it's a pandemic and we're in an emergency situation, it should be easy to find. So.
All right, well, let's see if there's anyone in the public who would like to comment. There are no hands up right now, but if you are interested in commenting, press star nine now. Hang on a few seconds. All right, um, I, whoops, we do have one. And please, if you're on and you're interested in talking, don't wait till the other person's done, press star nine now so we know that you want to speak. So, um, let me see here, we've got Tendi with the last four digits of 0151. Press star six and mute.
Hello, I just confirm that if somebody is not vaccinated, but they're working in a store or a public place, then they're supposed to still be wearing a mask, um, until further notice. Uh, I think that's what I heard, I just wanted to make sure.
All right, I think we will, we'll go, we'll get that answer for you when we go back.
Great.
Thank you, Dottie. And then, um, our other speaker is 3053, I believe it's Thomas, um, welcome.
Good morning, Thomas Mulder here. Uh, from my take on that is we still have a lot of unanswered questions about getting back to in-person meetings and even how the county is gonna move forward with workforce till that Callosia thing's passed. So it'd be really, really nice to really publicly put things out there as far as in-person meetings, how people can communicate and participate and also when, uh, the public might expect, uh, all levels of the county back to normal or somewhat normal staffing and offices open. Seems like a tough haul, uh, wish you guys luck. I, I, uh, support the comments I heard about, uh, trying to back off that overtime. I, I kind of agree, like, yes, if we aren't part of this, uh, emergency or local urgency ordinance, then we can't get state funding, but at what point in time are we just, uh, wasting tax dollars? But at what point in time are we just wasting tax dollars on overtime when maybe we could provide it, a better use of tax dollars via education and other different things that will improve our county? Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Thomas. And we have no other hands up, so we'll go back to the board. Supervisor Bone? You might want to, can you turn on your microphone?
I keep getting bad signal pictures here. I want to thank public health because the recent, yesterday's little blurb about what was going on was so detailed and I, and I would implore my other supervisors, if these, if these clinics are taking care of your, in your district, I mean, I know we have a Matol one coming up again, and I called probably the six or eight of the largest employees, even though I had been in contact with them all through this and they'd been set up. But this is for a lot of them, and thinking far enough ahead, if we're going to go remotely, the Johnson and Johnson is so much easier, understanding that we have to have Pfizer for children, but I noticed we're providing both. But the breakdown of what we're going to have, the times and everything else, sometimes it's a little bit on us. Maybe we call those big employers, those, those guys that have more than 20 employees and say, hey, there's a clinic coming up, offer your guys 50, I was telling everybody, offer your guys a hundred bucks to go get it. And I, I mean, and incentive may do the other thing as, and also make them aware and a lot of these larger employees, there is no residency checks, there's no anything else. They just want to look at you, get your name and, and vaccine you. So I, I, I think the breakdown yesterday was so easy, and I've, I've called a few of the people in Eureka because there's two Eureka clinics, and it told you what's going to be there. I know some people can't take the Johnson and Johnson because of, of blood reasons for their blood. But I mean, just having the breakdown, and it was so easy to read. And I just think the more, the more we get it out there, and especially in our remote areas and make it as easy as possible. I know that, that the other supervisors that are, you know, out, out in the hills are trying to get those and have been very successful. You guys have been very successful. And earlier, when we were telling businesses to call in, I know a couple of businesses have called in and have got great reaction times and have been able to have a clinic, maybe not in, at their work, but within blocks and being able to provide other employers. So we're, we're doing our part. It's just if people don't, I didn't know. I mean, that, that, there should be nobody that says, I didn't know there was a clinic. We've got it on the, out of Matol, it's in the Google group. Like I said, the stores know, they're posting it, so. Thank you. That's, it's getting easier and easier to read and you're never going to get it right because we're always going to want stuff added and taken off, so. That's why you guys get paid the big bucks.
Supervisor Bone, any other supervisors have any last minute comments, questions? Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, just add me to the chorus of thank yous for everybody moving and getting these things done. I, I really feel like what we're seeing is it's just going to become more and more and more inconvenient to not be vaccinated in terms of whether you want to travel. We're seeing national companies require vaccinations of their employees to come to work. They're doing it, a lot of it is based on their, we've perceived, if not real, insurance issues associated with that in terms of their, you know, the workforce safety and what they feel like they're going to be liable for if they don't make these requirements. And we're going to see that probably as well with travel with, with airlines and, and I don't know if any of us remember, and our WHO cards, the World Health Organization travel cards for traveling to, to nations where things like polio and, you know, and other diseases are endemic. And so I just, it just, we're just moving in that direction and one argument or an argument, you know, one persuasion I've, I've talked to folks about is like, it's just, when is it, when, how much, how much of this inconvenience are you willing to, to, to endure at some point? And we've seen that with vaccinations with kids going to school and other things like that. It's, I think this one's going to be even more so. And how much inconvenience are, are we willing to put onto other folks around us? Because what we're seeing is these, these, you know, these restrictions and regulations associated with safety around this is going to impact people in the workforce around us. It's going to impact, you know, gatherings and those sorts of things in the public setting. And so it, I just, you know, I just, it, it just seems like, it just seems like the, the way to go is to get vaccinated and I'm hoping people see it the way, the way we do. So I appreciate that very much.
All right. I don't see any more questions. Thank you for being here for as long as you guys were today. Michelle and Dr. Hoffman and Linda and everybody, it was great conversation. A lot of unknowns still, but looking forward to moving forward. All right, we will let you guys leave and we'll move on. So we're going to go to departmental items. And first one we have in front of us today is, comes from the CIO's office and is regarding the proposed budget. And I do see both CIO Nelson and Alicia Hayes, so CIO Nelson?
Thank you, Chair Bass. Today is our annual proposed budget agenda item. And today we'll be proposing the fiscal year 2122 budget. And I just want to take a moment to thank the management and budget team, particularly Alicia Hayes, Sean Quincy, Karen Clower, Neftali Rubio Mills, Vanessa Erickson, Leanza Rose for all of their hard work in putting the budget together, and Manny Machado. In addition, I just want to really, I, I need to formally recognize the county and the county staff, and again, particularly the management and budget team in winning the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for the second year in a row. This is a national award and is the highest honor that this county can receive for its budget presentation. So with that, I'd like to turn this over to Assistant County Administrative Officer Alicia Hayes.
Thank you, CIO Nelson. I am going to share my presentation. Can everybody see this screen right here with just the presentation on it?
Yes.
Yes, okay, great, thank you. Good morning, Chair Bass, members of the board. I am Alicia Hayes, Assistant CIO in the County Administrative Office. And today I come before your board to present the fiscal year 2122 proposed budget. I ask you, Nelson, just that in fiscal year 201920, the county was awarded for the first time the GFOA Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. This presentation award signifies the county's efforts to maintain a transparent and user-friendly document that the public finds useful. Just this week, we found out that we have yet again received this honorable designation for the fiscal year 2021 budget. I'm so incredibly proud of the county staff and the management and budget team who have worked to put together this exemplary document. Even with the demands of the pandemic and monumental workloads, staff remains steadfast and dedicated to this document. I would especially like to thank Karen Clower, Sean Quincy, Neftali Rubio Mills, Vanessa Erickson, Manny Machado, and Leanza Rose, all members of the management and budget team for being an amazing team and a joy to work with. I'm also very happy that CIO Nelson has received this honor in the last budget that she'll put together for the county. Her leadership, professionalism, and encouragement is what drives our team forward. And I think I can speak for the entire team in saying that we're incredibly grateful to have had the opportunity to learn from her and we wish her well in her new adventures. This budget process begins early in the calendar year with the mid-year presentation that comes before your board. This year, that's in place on January 26th. Through that report, your board establishes the parameters to guide the budget development. For fiscal year 2122, those parameters include a statusful budget, with the exception of Measure Z and previously approved ongoing allocations. This means that general fund allocations did not increase in the coming fiscal year. Your board also directed staff to accept additional requests for general fund appropriations with a preference given to one-time requests. With the parameters in place, the budget kicked off on February 5th with budgets due to the MBT team on March 16th. The management and budget team utilizes the month of March through May to review and compile the entire county budget. Today before your board is the presentation of the proposed budget with budget hearings taking place on June 21 at 1:30 and 5:30, and final, final budget adoption anticipated to take place on June 29th. Today, the total proposed budget or spending plan before your board for fiscal year 2122 is $505.63 million. The total proposed budget represents an increase of 40.1 million or 9% more than the budget your board adopted for the current fiscal year. A significant portion of this increase is due to large projects that will take place to address prior year storm damage and for the planning and construction of the Manila and Humboldt Bay Trail. Overall, the largest portion of the budget is allocated to health and human services with public works and law and justice coming in second and third. In the general fund, projected revenues for fiscal year 2122 are $148.6 million, which represents an increase of 1.7 million or 1% from the current fiscal year's adopted budget. This revenue increase is primarily due to an increase in building permit fees, property tax, and sales tax. In fiscal year 2122, the general fund will utilize 6.8 million in other financing sources, including 2.2 million in the use of fund balance, in order to present a balanced budget to your board. Over half, or approximately $89.5 million of the general fund revenues, which includes 12.5 million of Measure Z funding, is available to be spent on your board's priorities and projects. The fiscal year 2122 budget proposes that your board allocate 155.5 million in general fund expenditures, which is a decrease of 1.4 million or 1% from last fiscal year. This decrease is primarily due to the completion of large projects and the reclassification of expenditures to other financing uses. Measure Z is estimated to bring in 12.5 million in revenue for the community in fiscal year 2122. Your board appointed a nine-member citizens advisory committee to make recommendations on the use of these funds. This committee has played an integral part in reviewing the Measure Z requests received in fiscal year 2122. At the end of March of the current, or excuse me, the current calendar year, the committee submitted their Measure Z funding recommendations for inclusion in the proposed budget. On April 20th, your board evaluated those recommendations provided by the committee and, and provided staff direction in moving those recommendations forward. The committee recommended a total of 6.4 million in funding applications with 4.5 million available for allocation at that time. The fiscal year 2122, or excuse me, the fiscal year 2021 proposed budget includes a recommended 12.5 million for Measure Z expenditures. This is comprised of 8 million in ongoing expenditures and 4.5 million in one-time expenditures for local agencies. And, and excuse me, this is a reference to the 2122 budget. More detail on the Measure Z proposals submitted and recommended for funding can be available in attachment four of your board report. The chart on this slide depicts how funding has been allocated over this six-year span that Measure Z has been in effect. As you can see, law enforcement, fire, and roads have received the majority of the funding. In total, 176 public safety projects have been funded with more than $70 million. Through April 2021, Measure Z has generated 11.6 million or 1.9 million more than same time period for the prior year. The industry groups, including general consumer goods and auto and transportation, increased revenue by 27% and 25% respectively, or more than $600,000 over the first six months of the current year. Prior to the onset of the pandemic, economics, economists, and governments across the county projected lower than normal revenues virtually across the board. Many things contributed to the increase in revenues, including increased online sales, lower interest rate, federal stimulus, and unemployment benefits, all of which were unknown at the time of budget adoption. While staff do not yet know the revenue that will be received through the rest of the fiscal year, due to continued economic good news, staff can confidently increase projections for Measure Z by 1.622 million for a total of 12.7 million in revenue anticipated to be received in fiscal year 202021, which means your board can allocate these additional funds to Measure Z projects. These funds are sufficient to fully fund previous funded applications that were reduced through the evaluation process and all remaining projects that were previously unfunded, leaving approximately $23,000 in unallocated funds for allocation at a later date. Detailed on this slide are those applications. There's a total of 1.3 million in applications that were previously not recommended for funded, for funding that can now be funded, as detailed on this slide. In addition, approximately $290,000 in reductions were made to applications that were recommended for funded, for funding and can now be fully funded through the additional allocations that staff are projecting. Moving on to the American Rescue Plan Act, Congress passed this act in March with $1.9 trillion being allocated. This provided 350 billion in federal fiscal relief to local governments, with 65.1 billion set aside for counties and another 65.1 billion designated for cities. It's anticipated that the county of Humboldt will receive 13.16 million. The US Treasury has released guidance on uses for the local fiscal relief funding. This funding can be used to respond to the public health emergency and address its negative economic impacts, replace lost public sector revenue, and invest in water, sewer, and broadband, broadband infrastructure. Your board approved the spending plan for last year's Federal CARES Act funding, which included funding for emergency response and aid to small businesses and nonprofits. Staff are recommending an outline of a spending plan for fiscal year 2122 that bears some resemblance to the CARES Act funding, but it also takes advantage of the public sector lost revenue provision. Accordingly, staff recommend the spending plan that allocates 60% of funds for small businesses and nonprofit grant programs, 25% to road repairs and improvement projects that have been delayed due to reductions in gas tax revenues, and 15% for contingencies. Moving along to additional funding requests. Each year during budget development, departments have an opportunity to present requests for additional money from the general fund. Departments and outside agencies submitted nearly $8 million in additional funding requests, which included 2 million for ongoing requests, as detailed on this slide. In addition, 5.7 million in one-time requests have also been received. The CIO is recommending 5.3 million in funding requests, primarily for one-time requests, as detailed in attachment five of your board's report. In addition to the funding requests received through the budget process, staff continue to receive requests from outside agencies. Due to the deadlines in preparing the proposed budget document, these are not included in the budget but are available for your board's consideration. Those requests include $3,700 for the law library to purchase annotated California codes, $15,600 for the grand jury to utilize the Eureka Veterans Hall as a meeting location, $200,000 for Lou Edwards to conduct polling and preparations for three ballot measures to be placed on the 2022 ballot, $250,000 for probation to address water damage that occurred during the construction of the juvenile hall facility, $400,000 in American Rescue Act funds for the North Humboldt Recreation and Park District, also known as the Arcata Community Pool, and $6 million in financial assistance for the Harbor District to develop a new multipurpose marine terminal. Also contained in today's report is a recommendation to approve a loan for the McCade Track Forest Community Forest in the amount of 225,000, a transfer from the Taxless Reserve Fund of 1.3 million, and approval to continue voluntary furloughs in the fiscal year 2122. With that, I conclude my staff report and will gladly answer any questions that your board may have.
Through the chair?
Sorry, thank you, Rex. Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, thanks, Alicia. And I, and I, I really have to mention that the budget book every year gets more, and I'm sitting here with the last 15 years of them and I'm, I'm also looking that our budget, the first year I was, I came in af, right after the budget was done, our first year budget was 265 million and I came in under the guidance that I was going to cut government spending and everything else, so. Anyway, I, it just, and I, and I look at our general funds far, stays quite a Anyway, I, it just, and I, and I look at our general funds far stays quite a bit under our general funding expenditures far are outweighed by what we have to do through DHHS, our state and federal mandates and stuff, so I appreciate everything that goes there. And just how concise this is, but I was wondering on the six million dollars of the Harbor District, um, I know this is, and, and, and I don't, is that a loan or is that a gift to the Harbor District?
Uh, CIO Nelson might elaborate on this, but I, I think that this is a, a large ask, and so if your board were supportive of that request, that CIO staff would evaluate what the best funding mechanism to that is, and we may be able to use our finance plan, uh, as a source or, um, seek general fund revenues. And I see CIO Nelson shaking her head in regards to the finance plan, so I think she probably has some things to say as well.
So I, uh, this is a significant request, and if this is something that your board wants to consider, I would recommend that during the budget presentations on June twenty first, that your board invite representatives from the Harbor District, uh, to better understand this significant, uh, request. And, um, my understanding is this is not a loan, that this is a financial ask as a contribution to the port infrastructure.
Okay, and that's, okay. Um, and then the Measure Z dollars, um, I like that we're just going down the line as, as they were brought in, and I think that's what we said from the get-go. I appreciate that. I'm, I'm somewhat thankful that the Oak and F is being addressed since, because the, the accident totals show that, so I appreciate that. And it seems like a lot, I think it could be less, but as we look at it, I appreciate the Ferndale Vets, because I don't want it to turn into the Garberville Vets and the headache that Michelle Bushnell is having. Fully understand, and I, and I'm not trying to steal Michelle's thing, we've, we have followed this up immensely. It is shovel-ready. Garberville, we're still trying to figure out the courts and everything else, and I want to applaud Supervisor Bushnell for all the time and effort she has put in to that down there, and we're on the committee, but she's been like a one-man band, so. I just, I, it, they have two residential heaters that have been heating that building, and now they're both dead and they can't be serviced, and it's, we got it painted. They take very good care, and it, in that small town of thirteen hundred people, um, it needs to be addressed. The other thing, so thank you for that. Um, the other thing I would like to talk about is I know it says somewhere, which line was it, the hundred thousand dollars for the redistricting? I'm hearing from the state and everything else, we're going to be, the difference in our population is probably going to be well under a thousand, probably under five hundred over the last ten years, and I'm just wondering if we need to spend two hundred and fifty dollars a person or whatever. I'm wondering if it, if it's under a thousand people, it seems to me like we could get a committee and probably figure out how to do that redistricting. I, I, since I was a victim of redistricting, I understand the, the implications, but if we have a small number of people, it looks like we won't have to juggle the lines very much, and it may be some money we don't have to spend if it's a very, you know, if it's under a thousand people or under five hundred people, the difference for the redistricting. So.
Sure, I can speak to that. Um, we have gone through an evaluation process to contract out with an expert on redistricting. Um, that contract is anticipated to be approximately fifty thousand dollars, uh, which leaves fifty thousand left. Um, staff in our office are incredibly tasked at this point in time, and so we are evaluating a partnership with the CCRP to help us in conducting that work. So that's where the additional fifty thousand would be expended. Uh, you may recall that CCRP helped us work through the census process, and so they're well-versed in, um, in community involvement. And the redistricting is, you know, while it might just shift a small number of individuals, it, it's an extenuating process that's going to involve public meetings and community outreach and, uh, development of new maps. Um, so, so it is regardless of the number that move, going to be allowed.
Fully understand, but if we have, if, if there's very few deck chairs on the ship to rearrange, we don't need to bring every, we don't, maybe we don't need to do as elaborate, you know, we're not going to have whole communities like we did before, Red, you know, Scotia Red, you know, we, we're not going to have that big shift like we did before because we had to move so much around.
Sure.
But, and it's, it's just a thought, I mean, because you're, you're talking quite a bit of money per, because it's, our, our, we're one of those counties that I thought we were going to lose people, but I guess I've heard we've grown just, uh, way under one percent, so.
Sure, and through the chair, we will be, um, returning to your board. Uh, we're anticipating on June twenty ninth with a presentation from the redistricting partners, uh, who will present to your board some options as to how we move this process forward, so we will certainly gain your input.
Thank you, thank you for, thank you for that, and thank you again for such a great budget. I mean, it, it gets better, it, it, it is so much easier to read and comprehend year after year, and the information you put on, in there is invaluable.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
What? Okay, Supervisor Madron, and then Wilson.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I too want to congratulate staff on the award. Uh, it is an incredible product that you've produced, and, uh, you know, my third year into it, uh, it's getting easier, as Supervisor Bone said, to, to follow things and understand all the incredible complexities of our half-billion-dollar budget. Uh, so thank you all for all your hard work in, in getting this to us. I just have, uh, three comments primarily, uh, that are specific to my district, as you would imagine. First of all, in the Measure Z stuff, I am so excited to see that we had increased revenues, and, um, you know, I've been kind of seeing that when you go out and shop in the last year, the hardware stores are just going crazy, right? Everybody's doing all these fixer-up projects, et cetera. So glad to see the increased revenues when we didn't really expect it, and glad to see all the items on Measure Z getting funded. Uh, I think there's been a little bit of a miscommunication here on the one. Uh, it's, uh, proposal number three, I believe, it's listed as, uh, uh, number twenty one on the list, and that's for the city of Trinidad, a halftime sheriff deputy. Um, there's an asterisk there, and it says that the sheriff cannot provide the staff to fill that position, and therefore our staff are removing it from the list. Well, that's a miscommunication. In fact, the staff, uh, the sheriff has already provided those deputies, uh, and the city of Trinidad is simply asking for funding to help support that position. So we're not asking for the sheriff to provide any additional staff or personnel. This staff already exists, it's already happening. Blue Lake and Trinidad share one and a half deputies, so they have a total of three, and each of them have one and a half, so to speak. So again, to just be very clear, I want to see that, uh, city of Trinidad's proposal stays on the list, and given what we're recommending here, it should be receiving a recommendation for the seventy nine thousand nine hundred and eight dollars, because the position is already filled, so that negates the comment there. And the city has taken a huge hit in this last year from COVID with the shutdown of all of its short-term rentals. So as you can imagine, that's a big part of the economy in Trinidad, and so they've taken a really big hit, and they very much need this funding to continue, uh, providing the, uh, the deputy coverage for the city of Trinidad. So that's my first item. I think that's a simple fix in that it was just a miscommunication. We're not asking for new staff, so hopefully that's clear for staff. Uh, the other one is with the West Haven Volunteer Fire Department, and, uh, very much appreciate the work of county staff and, uh, working with Supervisor Bushnell, you know, on the Fire Services Ad-Hoc Committee. We've been discussing all kinds of fire services things all over the county, but in my district, it's the West Haven Volunteer Fire Department that's really struggling, uh, because they no longer have their pie sales and other things, but really trying to operate that, that fire department on twenty thousand dollars a year has just been, uh, uh, undoable. It's really not been a good situation, and West Haven has the unfortunate, uh, position of having their fire district within the CSA four fire district that, uh, already has an assessment. So West Haven simply cannot do an additional assessment on top of what's already being assessed in that district. So as a Fire Services Ad-Hoc, we've been discussing both short-term solutions to this conundrum, as well as longer-term solutions, and part of the longer-term solution is hopefully getting residents of the city of Trinidad, as well as the Trinidad Ranteria, to contribute to the CSA four. Right now, they do not, and yet they receive services from Cal Fire that the county pays for, uh, that goes to the Ranteria, goes to the city, uh, even though they're not paying for that service. So, uh, we want to try and maintain a really vibrant medical and fire services in our area, and ideally that will include Cal Fire, West Haven, Oreg Volunteer Department, et cetera, and to get to that place, we're going to need to increase some revenue. So that's sort of the long-term plan that we're working on, but in the short term, Cal Fire actually came forward, the battalion chief at the Trinidad Station made a recommendation at a recent, uh, meeting that we had, that they would be supportive of the county utilizing any unspent balance in the CSA four contract at the end of the fiscal year, that that could be allocated to West Haven. So basically, in short form, uh, we have a contract with Cal Fire to provide services in the CSA four district, and that is approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually. It changes over time. Uh, and Cal Fire typically has been billing us for about a hundred and eighty five thousand dollars a year. Uh, that can also change. Uh, what's actually happening is the off-season is getting shorter, and this money we pay Cal Fire provides coverage at the Trinidad Station during the off-season. Well, the off-season used to be like eight months long, now the off-season is maybe four months long, you know, five months, and so, uh, the strain on that budget is going down, but, um, the point is that we contract for about two hundred and fifty thousand, we only spend about a hundred and eighty five thousand. So one of the proposals is to have this board support an allocation of unspent funds in the CSA contract to Cal Fire at the end of the fiscal year, that those unspent funds could be utilized, uh, and provided to the West Haven Volunteer Fire Department. That would be about fifty nine or sixty thousand dollars a year. Of course, those numbers will change, and there's certainly no guarantee that there will be any money left over at the end of the year, but the reason this was suggested was because it does, it has zero effect on our budget, because we're already budgeting for the two fifty. It does change expenditures in that we might spend an additional sixty thousand dollars a year supporting West Haven, but it does not change the budget. It still fits within the budgeted amount of the two fifty or so. So I'm just, uh, hoping that maybe staff could speak to this, uh, recommendation on my part, and what effect it would have on the budget, if, if you could please provide some feedback on that. Thank you. And then I, I just, um, Madam Chair, I just have one more follow-up after that. Thank you.
Through the chair, I can respond to that. Uh, that, you, you are correct, Supervisor Madron, that we could utilize general fund dollars that were unexpended in a previous year to provide funding to, uh, West Haven in, in the coming year, and, and your estimates are on point that that would be about, uh, fifty five or sixty thousand dollars. Essentially, what would happen is the funds would fall to fund balance, let's say, in fiscal year twenty twenty one, and then they would be reallocated in fiscal year twenty one, twenty two for that purpose. Typically, your board makes these modifications through the, uh, budget hearings, which will take place on June twenty first, and so we can return with the recommendations for both the Trinidad Measure Z and the West Haven, uh, project to be considered at that time.
Thank you very much, um, Ms. Hayes. Um, and, and again, I'm just, I'm asking for board support for this, because West Haven's in that very unfortunate position of being a district within a district, so it really has no other way to raise the money like all the other fire districts do. Um, so anyway, I appreciate your consideration of that. Um, yes, they can do fundraisers like all the departments do, uh, but that's been difficult the last two years. Anyway, uh, moving on, I know this is not part of the budget process, but I just wanted to speak strongly for, in the facilities management plan process and budgeting in regards to that, when we come back to that in the near future, that we really find a way to help the Garberville Vets all that is so overdue, and I, I want to thank Supervisor Bone for speaking to that, and all the work Supervisor Bushnell's doing on that. You know, if we can get that roof back on, gut the black mold and the stuff out of the inside, and then work with the community to rebuild that hall, I very much would love to see that happen. I know that's outside of our current budget process we're here talking about today, but I just wanted to put my support behind that as well. Uh, thank you, and again, incredible work. Thank you for all that you all do as staff to help us with this budget process. Appreciate it.
Supervisor Madron, actually Supervisor Wilson, you had your hand up, I don't know if it's still up, and then Supervisor Bushnell has her hand up, and then, and Supervisor Bone has his hand after that, so. Wilson?
Yeah, thank you. So I appreciate, um, the, you know, the effort and the, the, in the budget format that we've received, it just gets better in terms of ability for us to go through it and review it, and frankly, for the public to be able to go through it and review it as well. I, I highly recommend those folks who are interested in, um, how, you know, what the priorities are with relationship to the budget, and, and what the priorities are for relationship to the county are reflected in the budget. I mean, budgets are, are documents that aren't just about money, they're really about vision and direction, and, and, um, so, um, we try very hard to make sure that this is, that this, those are reflected in these, in these documents. Uh, one of the issues that we're starting to, you know, grapple with and, and work on, and we brought up, is, is climate change, and we have our, uh, Climate Action Plan that's being, you know, developed and worked on, and, you know, with, um, the likelihood of it being, you know, having, hopefully being, uh, get to, to this body to approve and move forward at some point, you know, we, I believe we should be budgeting and thinking about implementation of that, and we did talk about and did, um, approve, um, you know, a request to take a look at, um, a sustainability and climate resiliency coordination position, and, um, so I know it hasn't been developed yet, but we do know that something like that has, uh, you know, consummate budget, associate, or, you know, estimate, we can estimate fairly closely within budget terms about what that might be. Um, and I just would like to start, you know, having a, a slot for that, or some anticipated understanding where that might be, and sooner rather than later, we have a lot coming down the pipe related to this in terms of funding, both state and nationally, um, and so in order for us to, you know, leverage and be prepared for that, I think it's important that we show that preparation and getting ready. And I think the ref, the request that came from, and I, I, I want to, with regards to what, the request that came from the Harbor District, um, I want to say, you know, that's, that's pretty big, and definitely raises eyebrows for sure, but it's in relationship to, or is, to responding to this movement, um, again, statewide and nationally, to respond to a request from our community to prepare for the potential for offshore wind, um, which has, can have some pretty big impacts into this community, um, especially, um, you know, from an energy perspective, and then there's environmental issues, but then there's also, uh, the issues of our economy, uh, both locally and, and regionally beyond, and so, um, I think, I think it would be reasonable for us to receive some kind of report from the district about that, so that we're understanding with, I mean, I think what they're asking us is, are we on that team, you know, to, to, to see if that's something that we want to be a part of as, as, as our local governance body, and I think, um, we should at least hear that. Um, and, you know, people make requests for all kinds of things sometimes, and they're somewhere between zero and whatever that is that sometimes happens, um, and I think it's just a reasonable discussion for us to have, because it is probably one of the bigger municipally, um, uh, significant, uh, and jurisdictionally significant, um, potential projects on the horizon, and so I think that we, we probably should have, um, some unders, some better understanding of that, and, and, and we, and whether or not we want to be a part of something like that. So, um, we want to be a part of something like that. So I know we have these lists that you had put up there. There's the Measure Z stuff. I'm supportive of all the Measure Z things that are, you know, in terms of like, just, you know, following the list. I will say that, and I'm supportive of the, of the F Street request as well. I, I will say that though, that we, we should, you know, I would be amenable also to if the F Street, you know, area would, would want to come back with a plan to not just put in a stoplight or whatever, but really look at how to make that street seem less like a road. I mean, I know it says it's designed as an arterial road, but it is a street that people live on. And it, it would be nice to, there are design considerations and oftentimes while you can make it easier to cross at a certain location with a, with a stoplight, which again, this is, you know, budgeted almost half a million dollars and, and the long-term maintenance of that, you know, it still doesn't necessarily answer how safe people feel through the neighborhood when we have these kinds of arterial. And this isn't the only place we have in my, we have, they're in all of our districts. And so I just want to, you know, just say I, I support this step. And I think that there's, there's more and that can be done in all of the, in all of our areas where we have these arterial roads that go through neighborhoods that, you know, there's a term strode, I think they call it, where it's like, is it a street? Is it a road? Right? And, and what is that? And so in neighborhood streets are important. And so I just want to shout out to the efforts of the, of those folks and Supervisor Bone and trying to, trying to address that safety issue in that neighborhood. That's all I have in this, this moment. I mean, we have those kind of long lists that were put up in terms of like the additional requests beyond Measure Z, but from every, you know, from kind of like everything else. And I think I, I'm going to need a little more, you know, time to, and we'll have between now and the next round, but I wouldn't, I'm not going to promote taking anything particularly off that list, but you will hear from me in terms of, you know, where, what are some of the priorities between now and then? And what are some of the priorities on those lists I think are important? So thanks.
Supervisor Bushnell and then Bone?
Thank you. This is my first budget. And so I really wanted to thank CAO Nielsen for helping me understand it yesterday and to ask all of my questions and to help me with the process. It's a lot for a brand new supervisor. I additionally just want to say to this board that the Garberville Vet's Hall issue will be coming before us and that I hope we all can recognize that it's been a long time coming. And yes, there will be monies that are needed for that. But I, I want to really stress that for the small community and for the vets in the Southern Humboldt area, it is a large issue. And I would appreciate any support I can get on that. And thank you to Supervisor Bone and Supervisor Madron for bringing that up. And I just want to also congratulate the team for your award. That's awesome. And I really appreciate everybody's help at the CAO's office with helping me as a brand new supervisor understand this process. It's large. Thanks.
Supervisor Bone?
Yeah. And Supervisor Wilson's, we are trying to look at a redesign. I mean, actually quite a bit. The county side of F Street actually meets, is pretty wide. It meets when they, but the problem is we're having to deal with the city because we, that's kind of like a Harrison type deal. They, they own one half, but instead of going down the middle, we get one in, they get the other. And we're trying to make that. The biggest issue we've always faced with that is speed and what, what it is, the traffic light because it feeds from Cotten. And we have added, well, we've added seven stoplights, but we've added three stoplights in the last two and a half years on Broadway. And there are three more light, lighted crossings probably coming to Broadway. So everybody that's going to your district to work from Fortuna, Humboldt State and those places, everybody's taking that as route because I take it three or four times a day, it seems like. And it's just the backup. But speed is the number one issue, which, which comes down to safety. So we've, we've run, thank you to Public Works. They ran a, they ran a traffic study within weeks, probably about 18 months ago, we started this. So this is comparatively speaking, when Jimmy Smith started in 2006 for Fern and Walnut, till we actually did it 13 years later, this thing is running in lightning speed. But the accident ratio is meeting the criteria and we've got a very active group that's involved and has been very civil and, and asking questions. So that's, that's a good thing. The West Haven Volunteer, I, I can support that. If we can get some input from the Fire Chiefs Association. My concern is going outside. We give the Fire Chiefs Association over $2 million. I've given them 20 million or whatever through our Measure Z. And I always worry how we, how we turn to our other 35 volunteer groups when we go outside the realm of the Fire Chiefs Association on this. And I think the commitment that, you know, what, I mean, I helped raise money last year along with Supervisor Madron, came to the county and got some for, for West Haven because I missed the buys and I think, but we do have, we are lucky to have CDF up there, CAL FIRE as backup because they've been, I think we've all known people have worked there, but they, except if they get pulled out during the summer, they, they do a great job up there and cover both Trinidad, West Haven and, and do that. So with that, I, I think if we could get the Fire Chiefs Association official input on this, or we give the money to the Fire Chiefs Association and they divvy it out as a need, I think would, would, would be cleaner just for everybody involved. So I think, I, I, I feel that they should have input because otherwise, not that I don't support it, it's just, we're all going to have our supervise, our, our fire districts, our volunteer fire districts who don't, who have the same, 25 of them have the same ability as West Haven, pancake breakfast, raffles. We've all had to do fundraisers for them. We're, they're going to be coming to us and says, well, why don't we do it that way? Do you guys have, sit around? So I think that if we could do that, that'd be great. So I, I think besides that, I think it, it's good. And I, as I, obviously, I don't think we realize how much we will miss Amy. With, with everything that's going on, we're still winning awards for our budget presentations. I mean, that does not fall on deaf ears. And the other thing is, is it just gives me another opportunity. Did you notice how easy this Measure Z thing went? Because we have a great Measure Z committee that gives us a package and meets and, and reiterates under, with the help of Alicia, gives us a package with a beautiful ball around it. And if we want to change anything, it's for our own personal needs rather than, they, they, they give us a great package every year. So I appreciate that.
Thank you Supervisor Bone. I have a couple of questions regarding, first ARP or the American Rescue Plan, Plan. And, you know, it does mention nonprofits and I'm just curious in that, if that, does that, is that the arts? Is that, you know, is it services or do we, is that still left to be determined? And I'm curious where First Five could fit in because I think there's a lot of recognition of the importance of early childhood learning. And I'm just wondering, you know, what is all under that category of the nonprofits for the rescue plan?
I can speak to that through the Chair. We have intentionally left that category fairly broad and open. So I think as long as we can find a tie to a COVID impact and/or, you know, some contribution to economic recovery and stimulus, then we can make that nexus that it's, it's very flexible in how those funds are allocated.
Thanks. That, I appreciate that. And then where it comes to the lost public sector revenue, because I think a public sector, and airports doing great now. I mean, it's great to see three planes on the ground the other day. Is there anything, I mean, how does the lost public sector get determined? Or is that still also pretty broad right now?
It again, has to be tied to an impact through COVID. So certainly Aviation Department has that nexus. And, and that was the nexus we made to the Roads Department because they had a significant loss in gas tax revenues when sheltering in place was at, at its maximum. So there, there could certainly be some support that could be provided to the Aviation Department. I, I guess my only word of caution in, in that is just bear in mind that they did receive, I think about $17 million that will help, is going to make significant contributions to them. So we just want to carefully weigh those priorities.
And, and I, I understand that. And I'll be glad when that all is able to brought in. And then I, I agree with Supervisor Bone, I mean, well, I agree with him on something else. I also agree however, with Supervisor Wilson regards, looking at the, the Harbor District's request, it definitely needs more definition, but I do believe there's a lot of opportunity out there. So I'm hoping we can hear more about that and see a little bit more information on what that actually entails because it is a big ask. And then, yeah, the budget award is a huge deal. I mean, I remember back when I was at the city, they had their walls lined and we had an amazing financial team there. And, you know, since I, the last two years, I mean, Amy has been, you know, spearheaded this great effort. And I think it's a real compliment to Amy and her entire team that, that they've been bestowed that award again. I think it's, is definitely very cool. Supervisor Wilson?
Thank you through the Chair. I mean, I also, it'll be good to, if we could aggregate and maybe it is aggregated, I just didn't really see it in that way, all the kind of the RA requests that are not, that we haven't considered directly. And one of them, of course, is, is, comes from the Arcadia Community Pool, which is an institution that definitely, you know, has been hit hard by the, by this, you know, the pandemic and, and provides a huge value to not just folks directly in my community, but I know that people come down from the Fifth District quite a bit to that facility as well. And so, and it supplies some, you know, it just really offers so much good, you know, programmatic opportunities, you know? So I just want to make sure that that's one of the considerations that we take a look at.
Thank you. I think I'd like to go on to the public comment now. We do have three hands that are raised. If you are planning to speak on this item, just know that you'll have three minutes and press star nine to make sure we know you want to ask a question. And I'd say do that now if you can. All right. And then once we call on people, press star six to unmute. So our first speaker ends in the last four digits of 3401 followed by 8293. So if you are 3401, press star six to unmute. 3401, are you there? There you go. Welcome.
This is Larry Opker with the Harbor District. And so first off, I'd like to thank you for considering our $6 million proposal. We fully understand it's a, it's a big ask. And so often when we look at these projects, you know, we look and we say, who is the project proponent and who's asking? And it is the Harbor District, but it's more than just the Harbor District. It's, the reality is, is this is being driven by the President of the United States, the Governor of the State of California, the California Energy Commission, the Paris Climate Accord, and many, many citizens. The Harbor District is doing our best to keep up with these people, but this offshore wind project is being driven by these people. And they're the ones that are asking Humboldt County to develop the port, to prepare for the offshore wind industry as they recognize that the Port of Humboldt is the only port on the West Coast that can become the West Coast hub. And, but that doesn't mean there aren't other ports that can do this. And right now, as an example, in Morro Bay, they just commissioned a study and they're looking at, can they do it in Morro Bay? And they did an economic analysis and basically said that it would bring $412 million to the economy of San Luis Obispo and 2,400 jobs if they were to develop port infrastructure there. Where this came from, and, and again, we always have to look at, where's the driver? Who is driving this? We met with the State of California and they were saying, what do you need to do in order to make this happen? And we said, okay, well, there's this federal port infrastructure development grant of 56 million. We need $11 million of matching funds so we can apply for this grant because we just don't have it. And then the state, through the governor's office, we had numerous meetings, several meetings on this, and they said, okay, we'll come up and we'll give you the $11 million for the matching funds for this project. Again, the state being the driver behind this telling, asking us what we need to do to pull this off. The Harbor District, we, we can't do it alone. And so we look at who our partners are and, you know, it's really been HSU, SHOT, Synergy Lab, and Redwood Coast Energy Authority leading the, 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 the call on this. And the Harbor District is, has joined that partnership. And we're really asking the county to join this partnership as well. Next week, I have a meeting with all of the industrial property owners on the Smo Peninsula. We've been meeting regularly. I've had individual discussions with them and we've met as groups. We're meeting again on the 14th. And the goal is to get a unified position from Green Diamond, Danko, Snyder, Security Nationals, Zerlang and Zerlang, DG Fairhaven, as being the primary property owners. This is not just a Harbor District property. And that's what everybody is saying. Should not look at this like it's a Harbor District property. This is a Humboldt County project. We cannot do it alone. If you're looking to the Harbor District to solve this, then we're not going to be able to do this. I can just tell you is the Harbor District is not going to be able to do this alone. And so I would welcome the opportunity to give the board a presentation. This is really a matter of urgency because we're applying for a $56 million grant. We've hired really a, a top engineering firm that's assisting us to prepare the designs and cost estimates for those. I should have the detailed cost estimates.
Thank you, Larry. I think what we'll do is follow up. You'll be hearing from us because I have, thank you. But it's three minutes and I've got to be consistent. Sorry. Okay. So the next person who is speaking ends in the last four, 2236. And you will have three minutes. Press star six to unmute.
Good morning. Good morning supervisors. My name is Mary Ann Hansen, the Executive Director of First Five Humboldt. First, I want to congratulate the CAO's office on the recent award. Your award-winning budget clarity benefits all of us and I am so appreciative and want to congratulate you. I also want to thank the CAO's office for the really thoughtful proposal related to this first installment of American Rescue Plan, potentially support hundreds of businesses and nonprofits which were devastated during the pandemic. Related to the 60% portion of proposal, I want to urge you to direct your attention to childcare. Before the pandemic in 2019, 80% of families in Humboldt County who were looking for a licensed childcare slot, if they could work, couldn't find a spot. Kerry Benegas of Changing Tide Family Services is hopefully going to be able to share some information on the destination of childcare during the pandemic and childcare's unique challenges in operating. I want to urge you to designate some of those funds specifically for expansion and startup of childcare to begin to address this issue so that folks in Humboldt County can get back to work. I also urge you to allow retroactive premium pay for essential workers as allowable parts of the grant. I have stories about the risk and frankly, heroism of childcare providers during the pandemic, which allowed other essential workers to keep our county going. Childcare providers were required to reduce the number of children they could care for during the pandemic. Many had to close and so others stayed open but struggled financially. My own family's childcare provider, as an example, was receiving treatment for cancer and yet stayed open, caring for little ones that couldn't be masked so that parents of the children in her care could still get to work while she was also taking a financial hit. And finally, I want, related to the overall proposal, I want to note that your board has an extraordinary opportunity to support families and young children with the ARP funds. A few years ago, your board and I spent a lot of time talking about the, talking with the Director of Mental Health a few weeks ago. I've come to realize, well, just really had it brought home, that the mental health impacts on our youth have been jaw dropping and frightening, especially when we consider that our youngest children aren't somehow immune from the tsunami of mental health issues. But we know that the impact on them have lifelong impact on our county's long-term health. I want to urge you not to forget prevention and the needs of our youngest residents. I have recommendations I would be happy to talk more with you about, which includes, could include pre-clinical levels of support to families, since we recognize that mental health clinicians are in short supply right now. And these strategies could likewise have benefit, the benefit of preventing some of the burden on our county's mental health clinicians. I look forward to talking with your board more. I look forward to talking with your board more as you work to find solutions which will have the longest-term impact with these short-term one-time funds. I really appreciate it, and Supervisor Wilson stated that the budget is
Thank you, Mary Ann. Sorry about that. Thank you. All right. So we have the last four digits of 3668. Press star six to unmute. And a reminder, you'll have 30 minutes. I'm 30 minutes. Three minutes, not 30. Three minutes, and said, don't feel bad if you unfortunately don't get
I won't feel bad if I go over.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you very much, Board, for allowing me the opportunity to speak. My name is Nicholas Cole. I'm a member of both Measure Z Citizens Committee and the Prosperity Executive Committee. And I wanted to, first of all, thank the CAO for their communication skills, and through that, they absolutely helped get me to this meeting today. And I wanted to take a moment to recognize them. I also wanted to voice my support for the Harbor District in whatever way that's able to manifest. I believe it represents a long-term investment that could be a generational benefit for not just Humboldt Bay, but for the entire county. In looking, and the only other issue I really wanted to look at was looking at Measure Z, and I was very excited to see the amount of funding that we were able to include this year. One question that did come up in comment is regarding the Trinidad position. The, that position, as I read the application, was a new position. Now, I trust that you'll communicate with Sheriff Hansel about how to view that and what that really is. The one point that caught me was I had a philosophical challenge from Measure Z. We have a section of ongoing commitments with the Sheriff's Department that represents positions. And if this was an already filled position, I'm wondering if, or ensuring that, if we're funding another position for Trinidad, I would like to make sure that it's not one of those positions that's already funded within those, that ongoing section, and then, and thus, asking Measure Z to fund this position effectively twice. And that's something I want, I would love you guys to look into. I absolutely believe in following through. If this one gets funded, great. But I think it's more of a philosophical question that I want you to look at moving forward. Thank you for your time. I hope you have a wonderful day.
Thank you, Nicholas, and thank you for your commitment to the Measure Z Committee. We had one more hand up, but they have since disappeared.
Yeah, Chair, I would remind people, because there's been several people that have came in and out of the meeting, and there's another hand. I would just remind people that if they'd like to speak, they need to press star nine on their keypad right now, and we can get them in.
Well, as then, we've been saying that, but I guess people maybe have to jump off every once in a while, so. So at this moment, I'll say we have two, and that would be 3876, which I think has come back on the call, and 8293. So let's do 3876. Please press star six to unmute.
This is Eli Napa, City Manager of Trinidad. And I'm calling regarding the Measure Z unfunded applications, and Supervisor Madrone had addressed this, and I just wanted to confirm that the City of Trinidad has requested the We have previously, this is for a half-time sheriff deputy. The prior two fiscal years, we requested a half-time sheriff deputy, and it was unavailable through the sheriff's office, so we did not receive funding. However, since this past fall, either September, October, we have an arrangement with the City of Blue Lake where we are actually sharing one of their deputies. And this $79,900 would go towards the half-time sheriff deputy that we are sharing with Blue Lake. So that position is available to the city. And it's really important, because it not only helps provide protection to Trinidad, which is only one square mile, but the greater area, the greater Trinidad area, which is mostly unincorporated Humboldt County. And since we're about 10 minutes north of McKinleyville, which is the station, it really helps having a presence here on the ground in the Trinidad area to help to immediately respond to calls up here. So, and I do appreciate staff indicating that at the June 21st meeting, hopefully they plan on putting that back in for us. So thank you for that, and if you guys have any further questions from staff, let us know. I'll be glad to help out. Thank you.
Thank you, Eli. We have two more hands up. If you are the last four of 8293, press star six to unmute. So 8293, press star six, welcome. You are unmuted, so please go ahead.
Thank you, Board of Supervisors. This is Carrie Venegas from Changing Tides Family Services. I'm the Executive Director, and I want to say thank you for all of the budget information, for the great job getting the word out even during COVID. And Amy, I want to particularly recognize your leadership and say that it's folks like you, when you choose the public sector, that make a big difference between government that's good for people and government that's bureaucracy. I wanted to second the comments about being very proactive with supporting our local businesses who are childcare providers, who have stayed open the entire time during COVID. We know the demand is high, and it will only increase as we start reopening more fully later on this month. We had 215 childcare providing sites, including after-school, out-of-school time centers, and family childcare businesses prior to COVID, and we are now at 157 sites. We are only 73% reopened. 6% of our providers have permanently closed due to various issues arising from COVID. And that proactive investment would be so meaningful in making sure that our community and our economy can get back to work. So the previous dollars from the CARES Act really helped stabilize our local childcare, but having to have reimbursement for costs is a lot different than being proactive to expand or to actually have new providers open businesses. The average cost for that, for a family childcare provider, which is the majority of our small businesses who are childcare providers in our county, is between $1,000 and $10,000 just for the startup, with the average cost being at least five grand. These are very small amounts in a larger scheme of things, but they make a world of difference to folks being able to open these businesses and provide the care that our county needs to be active. Every dollar that goes into childcare, particularly for a startup like this, goes straight out into the community. It does double and triple duty, because when they put a fence up, they're contracting with McCullough. When they go out to buy furniture and chairs and equipment, they're patronizing the local businesses. Those dollars really work multiple times out there. They are also majority owned by women, and often women of color, who are eligible for the state's Small Business Credit Initiative, so that gives a double bang for the buck also. I would love to have further conversations, present some information about the landscape of childcare in our county, and some of the things that we can propose to do to help shore this up. And then also, I want to echo my colleague, Mary Ann Hansen, and say, we work closely together on childcare issues and early childhood mental health, and the prevention eye is a real opportunity here. We know that that need is high out there, and getting that ahead of it is what's really going to help our families stabilize and help our workforce be healthy and ready to reopen. Thank you so much. I look forward to any future conversations and any information I can provide, in addition to any recommendations.
Right, thank you much, Carrie. So, pardon me, there. We have one speaker left. If you're listening and you still want to make comment, please do press star nine. We will go to 9334, and ask you to press star six, and welcome. You'll have three minutes. Just press star six to unmute, 9334. There you go.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes. Welcome.
Hello. Hello.
Hello. Can you hear me? Yes, you certainly can.
Okay, Dennis Mail, I apologize. I'm down in Stockton working on drought stuff, but I wanted to support the Harbor District, not because I support the offshore windmills. I don't think that's the greatest deal, but remember this term, coastal dependent industrial sites. They're important, and a working harbor is important, so I support the Harbor District on that. I wanted to let you guys know, on June 23rd, we're going to have a Region One forum on the drought issue, and I'm going to send you the information to Kathy. She can distribute that to everybody. And on that same issue you talked about a week ago, I think John Frederickson or Bruce Ruff would be excellent members to have on your discussion group, the task force. And one, one issue I'd like you perhaps to think about in this is the issue that we've brought up about water transfer, transferring, expanding our service area to West Haven, Trinidad area, and the rancheria. I think these are your main topics. So thank you, and thank you for the discussion.
All right, thank you, Dennis. Right, that is the last hand up, so we'll return to the board. And Supervisor Wilson, you've had your hand up for a while.
Thanks. Through the chair, I want to align myself with a lot of the comments related to childcare providing services, and it's, it's, and even, it's in aligning that with really looking at some of the ARA funds associated with that. We just know that that investment is just always the best investment, dollar for dollar in terms of returns, and so I want to just be strong on that. And also, for so, for way too long, the business side of childcare has been something that has been really neglected and not taken as seriously. Of course, it has, you know, something to do with sort of, you know, the, the gender issues associated with that, and, and, and I think it's really time that we, we do our best to make sure that as a, you know, the business sector, that we do what we can to support that and, and make it something that is, that, that is, that people want to invest in their time and their money into, and that, and that the workforce is paid well for the very, very important work that they do. And so whatever we can do to support this, I think is, is great. I also, you know, there, there was a subject that had been brought up in the, you know, in the past, or that I've talked to some folks about, which is, in terms of, and it's, even though it's a small portion of, you know, related to the budget and could be applied to, again, to the same ARA, which is regards to general relief funding for those who receive that, and the general relief funds with relationship to loans associated with the loan requirements for failing to meet, you know, work requirements during the time of COVID. And I would like some consideration in the budget to see what we can do to help some of those folks who really are at the bottom of the ladder in terms of, you know, in terms of what we can, you know, in terms of their ability to be in this, in the workforce, and then also, and I just think that that relief to them would be very helpful and would not constitute much of a budget strain. So I want to, if that, we can just at least add that in terms of on the list of discussion points for, for future reference on this budget. Thanks.
I have a question for clarification for you, Supervisor Wilson. When you mentioned general relief, I think of there's GR, but it almost sounds like you're talking about just kind of like relief in general for some of those folks that have been affected. I just think there's two different things. So I just wanted to know, I just want to clarify that I understand which you're talking about.
Through the chair, I think CAO Nelson might have a better, you know, we've had some discussions about it. I'm not an expert in this, but I do see that, that there are folks that are, you know, just kind of have to pay back these monies, and they're kind of the least able in our community to do so. And so if we can help with a little bit of a leg up, that would be very helpful.
Through the chair, Supervisor Wilson is speaking about the county's general relief program, and at some point in the future, Director Beck will be providing some information on potential forgiveness of, of those general relief dollars that we provide to those that are less fortunate. So, and that is definitely something that we can bring back at a later date, should your board choose to do that, particularly, I believe, with the ARPA funds would probably be a good possibility, since if they weren't able to work during COVID, I think that probably qualifies. I hope that answers your question.
Okay, thank you. Yes, it does. And any other Supervisors have any questions, comments? And I know we've got some, a long list of decisions. Yes, Supervisor Bone?
I think, and I just, I don't even know why I'm saying it. It's, anybody can see that the, the investment we can make in Changing Tides and, and with Mary Ann and First Five, I had the pleasure of sitting on the board. I know, I think Supervisor Wilson is our representative now.
Michelle is.
The, the, the paybacks are, or Michelle is, sorry. I, I think the paybacks, and I mean, it plays really hard, close to, I know Michelle has grandkids, I've got grandkids. This is the most important time, and if you, if you screw it up now, they're ours for the rest of their lives. And, and, and I think that's, we have an opportunity here, and Mary Ann, you know, both of those agencies had leadership changes in the last couple of years, and, you know, after having long-time leadership, and never missed a beat. So I just think it's, it's, it's great the way it's evolving, and, and with that being said, I think Connie Beck and, and our budget team has always tried to do as much as they can, because most of them are mothers and fathers, and realize that. So I, again, I echo what was said by Supervisor Wilson about making sure the kids are covered.
Thank you, Supervisor Madrone.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I want to add my chorus to the Voices for Preventative Work as well, and clearly, First Five Humboldt and Changing Tides is two of those. In addition, you know, some of the programs in the DHHS department also are that preventative stuff, and I know they do everything they can within their budgets. And I, you know, when we start thinking about where we're going to spend money, I mean, the more we can spend on preventative work, clearly, the better off we are in the long run. And so for me, I actually want to add in HC Tacy and the Hope Center as two other programs that just really are so critical in our community. And in an ideal world, we'd move the Hope Center down to downtown Eureka somewhere, rather than way up in upper Eureka, and give it four times the space. And we would fill that place up with people that are so desperate for help and a place to go during the day and the rest of it. And of course, HC Tacy, with all the work they do with our youth, all those are so important. So I'll just add my chorus to supporting anything we can do to support these preventative things upfront. And obviously, what we really need is for the state to start pumping a lot more money into these programs, including mental health and the rest of it, because at the state level, when they do that, when they increase funding for this preventative work, the money is saved in incarceration and all the other problems that happen. So whereas at the county, if we just simply put more general fund money into these programs, and it reduces incarcerations and other kinds of things, that doesn't increase DHHS's budget. They don't get those pluses for that work. So anything we can do to improve funding for preventative work, including asking our legislative representatives and our governor under this big budget surplus to really sink a lot more money into these youth programs and mental health programs, which I guess we'll be talking about next with AOT. So thank you.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Hi, thank you. I just want to echo support for our youth. And Rex, there's, there are, they are ours for life regardless, our children. Productive, though, would be really good. And these programs, my grandchildren have, have participated. They are so helpful, and in my small communities of Southern Humboldt, Dinsmore area, it is oftentimes the only social outreach that they get. And so I um, it is oftentimes the only social outreach to take it, and so I, I really echo what all the other supervisors said, thank you.
Thank you. Well, I think most of it has been said, but I completely agree in that realm. I, I'd like to ask, um, Ms. Hayes, so we have a whole long list of recommendations, some are, you know, obviously pretty easy, come back to the budget, you know, two budget hearings on the 29th. Do you need us to go through these separately, like the voluntary unpaid furlough, do you need, no, so it's okay that, um, and you'll take whatever you've heard here in the discussions to bring back conversations on some of what we have mentioned wanting more information on?
Yeah, you can, I think it, it would be appropriate to just approve staff recommendations, and when, uh, when we draft the agenda item for the 21st, we will detail out, uh, some of the new requests that come in, um, and likewise, I will invite the Harbor District and the fire chiefs to participate in that meeting to provide additional information.
All right, that sounds good, so is there?
I'll move staff recommendation.
Second somewhere, please?
I'll second.
Thank you. Seeing no more hands up, um, Riley, do the roll call vote, please?
Yes Chair, thank you, Supervisor Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
And Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Thank you, it passes 5-0.
Okay, so, um, I think we need a break, but then we also could use lunch, and I know Connie's been here for quite a while, so, um, can we just take maybe a five minute break, unless, I mean, I need at least a five minute break, and, and if not, if I'm just run out of here, then Supervisor Wilson, this vice chair could take over, or five minutes, okay?
Can we, can just maybe like 10 would be, you know?
Okay, well, I was gonna, I was gonna offer a lunch break, but since seeing Connie has been so patient, um, okay, 10 minutes, that, that works for me, so.
How long do we expect the next item to be?
Yeah. Have a long conversation. So, um, I think it could be long, 11:40, let's say 11:45. We're gonna move on to our next item. And it comes to us from the Department of Health and Human Services, and is regarding the assisted outpatient treatment, so Director Beck?
Good morning Chair Bass and Supervisors, I'm here with our Behavioral Health Director Emmy Bosler Rogers for an update on, um, AOT assisted outpatient treatment. So I'll turn it over to her now.
Hi, good morning, um, I'm Emmy Bosler Rogers, Behavioral Health Director for the county, um, and as Connie indicated here today, um, to discuss the agenda item related to assisted outpatient treatment, also known as Laura's Law. Just as a reminder, DHHS Behavioral Health was before your board on April 6th of this year, and at that time recommended opting out of Laura's Law. That recommendation was based on a number of factors, including behavioral health currently offers services that are the same or very similar to AOT. There's no funding allocated for Laura's Law, and, um, to date, the data indicates that there are very low numbers of individuals that actually qualify despite a fairly large cost and significant commitment of resources. There's also been mixed support in Humboldt County for AOT, while some community members vehemently support AOT, others oppose it. So during the board meeting on April 6th, there was community advocacy for implementation of Laura's Law. They recognized that that advocacy extended prior to the meeting and, and beyond the board meeting, in in the form of phone calls and letters to your board, and at the time of the meeting, your board indicated that you felt significant concern about the acuity of mental health issues presenting in the community and the suffering, um, people were experiencing. And at that time, your board flagged that something needed to be done. So on April 6th, your board directed DHHS Behavioral Health to return with a supplemental budget and position allocation to implement Laura's Law, or a similar type of service, and to request an extension from the state to notify them of our decision to implement or not. So an extension was requested and granted by the state through the end of this month, and so today we're here before your board again, um, with four specific recommendations. First, approve and authorize DHHS Behavioral Health to implement a Laura's Law AOT pilot program to assist in determining the feasibility of implementation. Second, approve and authorize the Chair of the Board to sign a staff revised resolution to fund the implementation of Laura's Law AOT pilot program. Just to be clear, this revision is a fairly minor, um, language change, to clean up the document, um, it, it referenced an additional document when, um, the resolution is in fact the document, um, serving the purpose, so a, again, not a major change to anything substantial, just, um, languaging, and I would be more than happy to display track changes for you to review if that would be helpful. The third is to approve and authorize DHHS Behavioral Health to issue an RFP to contract for Laura's Law AOT pilot program, and the fourth is to discuss, um, DHHS Behavioral Health providing additional mobile response services to those in mental health crisis, including outreach and engagement to the most vulnerable populations. So this last recommendation comes out of an awareness that AOT implementation will take some time. AOT is one component of the continuum of care in our community, and we are seeing acute mental health crises throughout our community. It's important, I wanna just flag that the challenges we're currently facing related to mental health crises are complex and multifaceted. So they are impacted by a variety of factors and are not issues that can be resolved by any single entity or system. Behavioral Health, of course, has a significant role and responsibility. Um, and a primary way that we do that is through our mobile response team services and outreach and engagement. We have struggled to keep mobile response team positions filled and to secure adequate funding for those positions. We currently have grant funding which ends in November, and, um, we need additional mobile response team services even beyond those that are covered by grant funding, so we will continue to seek other sources, but we may need to return to your board at a later date with additional funding requests. I will note that we have obtained a small amount of additional funding through a partnership with public health that will allow us to increase outreach and engagement activities, and we will be using that funding to target those individuals who are our most vulnerable citizens and help connect them to services. So that, of course, is a piece of the work, AOT is a piece of the work. Additional mobile response team services is a significant piece of the work. Um, and just really recognizing currently in our community, there, there's a lot of work to be done in this arena, so your, your board support is certainly greatly appreciated. So thank you for your consideration of these recommendations, um, Director Beck and I are here for any additional discussion or questions that your board might have.
Thank you Emmy, um, any questions at this moment from other board members? I would like to say if you're, um, from the public and you're listening to this or watching this, please press star nine now so that we know that you do want to speak, because I think sometimes, um, don't want anyone to be late and miss the opportunity. Supervisor Bone, did you have a question?
Yeah Emmy, and I, we've talked, I've, I know there's people adamantly opposed, adamantly for, and then there are people that we all get phone calls about, and I, and a perfect case in point, we had an incident in our board offices last Friday. And by the time we had apprehended the guy who had come in and stolen some materials, the police had him, I was there, and then he looked, he turned around, he had just been released from jail, and he says, "Now will you take me to Semper Virens?" So I, I, and so my, my issue being is, how, how, um, distressed was he if he knew where he wanted to go, that's another issue to, to, to address. But in the, we've also had attacks on people on the streets that have had previous encounters. Um, I had, May 5th, I had one out in our side parking lot where a guy came after me, and I mean, and I, it just seems to be, people wanna ask, I, I think what the answer is, and I don't know if it's Laura's Law, I don't know if it's, I, I, I know it's mental health, or 70% of it's mental health, um, what do we do with the people that are on the streets, and I know we're trying to find areas and everything else, but some of these people will never be in a house, I can, I can guarantee, I mean, it's just these people that are, that are aggressive, that are out on the streets, or the ones that are, I mean, completely, the ones that are, you know, need help and you don't know what to do with, that are walking down our streets, and I, and I, I, I feel like a broken record, because I keep asking this, how do we address this? And since, um, it's starting to become an issue in other, you know, Arcade, obviously, it's starting to become an issue in Fortuna, um, it's always been focused here because most of the services are here. But it's, that's not what's going on, and I, I don't know, I know building 2,000 units, housing units for them will not cure the problem. It'll maybe consolidate the problem, I just, how do we address this, or is it the state just? I've, I've said this, I don't know how many times, there's 40 to 50 people living on the state Capitol grounds at night, and then Capitol Police come and chase them off at 6 o'clock in the morning. Now this is at the Capitol, at their doorstep. I don't know if they sometimes know where Humboldt is when it comes to that, so I don't, I don't know, so. The concern, it looks like we spend a lot of money on it, I mean, not a lot, but we, we, we do fund considerably, but I just, the, the public wants answers. The, the, yeah, I mean, how, how often, I mean, even if they don't know who you are, I mean, do you hear it from the people, you went to school, I mean, people from here going, "What has happened to our town, it's never was like this before." And I don't, I don't have good answers, like, my, my standard answer is, "Well, it's kinda like this everywhere," but that's not an answer, that's a excuse.
Can I respond through the chair, I, I think, you know, it's a very good point Supervisor Bone, there's not a single answer to, to this issue, and and part of it is that the people that we're seeing right now are dealing with issues that are so, um, complex and multi-layered, and often have co-occurring, um, challenges, right, and so there's substance use disorder issues, mental health, homelessness, um, you know, breaking the law, and so, so really, the solution in my opinion is the partnership between all of our community providers and systems, and that's, that's what we're working on, and it, it isn't an easy overnight fix, but it is something that I think as we collaborate together and find resources and, and really strategize how to kind of meet the entire person's needs, that's, that's where we'll start making some headway.
Supervisor Bushnell, and then Wilson?
Hi, thank you, um, can you explain pilot program?
Sure, through the chair, I, I was thinking I would get that question. Really, I think pilot program is just flagging that we're not absolutely sure that this is the, the, the very best approach, but we're gonna give it a try, and we wanna see whether or not it's gonna work, and if it does, then we can continue and expand, and if it doesn't, then we can, um, continue to look for other options for how to address this need.
How, thank you for that, um, through the chair, can I ask an additional question, please? How, what, how long is the pilot program for?
Well, um, through the chair, that's, that's a good question too, I think that we initially had talked about it as being one year, I, I think that would probably be the point of reassessment. Our ask is to contract this out, so we would be working with, um, a, a local provider on lifting up and starting the pilot program, and then evaluating likely after about one year.
Thank you, and what kind of a local provider would, um, is there, or in Humboldt County that would provide this kind of assistance?
Through the chair, um, you know, historically, we have had pretty minimal resources locally for organizations that provide these services. We're getting more and more, and in, in recent past, we've had pretty good success with people from outside of the county applying for, for RFPs that we put out. We do have a current provider that does, um, provide AOT in other counties, so that person could consider applying, and then I anticipate that we'll get applications for, from other providers who are willing to, um, move, move staff up here.
Thank you for all the answers.
All right, um, Supervisor Wilson?
Thank you, I appreciate the, um, the solution here in terms of the pilot program element of that, I think it's just so many things that we can do, you know, we, we have questions about stuff, sometimes you just gotta try it and see what happens, and, and collect the data associated with that. And I guess, I'm kinda wondering, is the, do you think that the budget allocated as, as delineated in this would account for sort of, um, um, aggregating the data that we get from this as well, to be able, you know, as part of, you know, reporting back to us? Okay, I just, that's, that was one thing I just wanna, I wanted to ask, and, um, yeah, I just, I just think that you, you could look at this budget, and it seems like, you know, this is pretty sizable, when you look, you know, there's, it's, um, it's upwards over the next three years. Currently, it's like, almost $900,000 over the next three years, and, um, and, but it is a significant issue as well. Um, and, and as so often, we could ask to have a study done, you know, have some consultants in to figure this out, but oft, oftentimes, the best way to get real data is to do pilot study and, or a pilot project and find out, and so I just appreciate the, the creativity in this, in this, uh, direction, and so I'm ready to support it when, when we're, when we get there, so thanks.
And thank you. Supervisor Wilson, Supervisor Madron?
Thank you Madam Chair, um, yeah, I too very much appreciate, uh, what staff have come back to us with here, I support the recommendations. I know this is difficult, uh, it requires some more funding, uh, from the general fund and from our board, but I support that, I think these things are, are critical. And I don't wanna see, and I know we really can't cut, uh, programs like the Hope Center and HC Tacy and other preventative stuff like the MIS program. We need to keep those all in place, but frankly, not only would I like to, um, fund this request, but I'd love to see us get more money into those other preventative programs. And, you know, we're not gonna be able to necessarily do that out of our county budget. Uh, we really need the state to step up and increase funding for these things, but I just wanna, once again, offer support for any preventative measures we can do, including what's before us here today, so thank you for your work coming back to us.
Thank you Supervisor Madron. No, and I'm also, I mean, I've been in support of the concept for a very long time, but I know this is really hard for staff to come back and try to, try to, um, present kind of like trying to see into the future. Um, in the discussion, it was mentioned that many counties have opted not to do it. Um, I also know many counties that have opted to do it, I was in with them, there's a women's leadership group, the Board of Supes that, you know, with CSAC that meet, and, and I mean, it does have a really varying, um, experiences throughout the different counties, and it would really be helpful for me if I could actually reach out to some others who are going through these pilot programs too, or, you know, is there like a bank of data of who's doing what, because it's mentioned that many counties decided against it, well, it'd help me if I knew who, as, as this, you know, into the future, because the way I see it pilot, this is the right way to go, I know others are doing that. And I think you said we could potentially reassess after a year, because I was looking, because it does go, like, two full budgets plus part of this one. So the fiscal year '22, '23, is that something that we would then be looking at again? I mean, when you say we'd reassess after the first year, I'm just curious, what does that reassessment look like?
Yeah, through the chair, so I, I think that it will take us some time to actually get AOT up and running, and so I'm anticipating that that the budget for the first year really is only gonna be funding about a, a partial year of programming, and then the, the first full year likely will be '22, '23, and that's where I would, that's where I would recommend evaluating, reevaluating.
All right, thank you. Well, I do know we have several people from the public on, Supervisor Bone?
Sorry, I, I wanna give a, Emmy's raising her kids here too, and everybody, she, she sees it every day, I mean, a couple of our conversations have been taking place on the streets of our, our great city. And so she gets it, and in no way, when I ask these things, these are questions I get asked, and that's our job, is to relay these things. And it's also what we see, and, and, I mean, Connie's got these phone calls Saturday, Sunday from me, when there's people laying all over somewhere and stuff, and, and Emmy responds and everything else. And like I said, they all have families here, so they all are doing their best to get what they can, and nowhere, sometimes in my illiterate way, I, I come off a little harder, and I mean, and I don't mean to. I'm just, I'm just begging for answers. Because I, 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 you know, I'm 60-plus years here. And I mean, I used to ride my bicycle downtown every day to go fishing on the docks. And I, and a lot of people won't let their kids come downtown anymore. And that's a big part of what we were about, of what we could do. And, and it's the same thing with people. Kids used to go play frisbee on the plaza. They don't allow, you know, you, you wouldn't normally do that with your kids now. And, and same thing, it, it, and, and, and as it evolves, I just, I, we just need to get answers. And I don't know. And the state, I mean, the state right now, they're, they're talking to $78 billion, and they're throwing money every which way and everything else. But sometimes we're, because somebody's going to stand up and scream, says, hey, you guys looking at us over here? And then they say, okay, we'll throw $5 billion at housing. I says, we need $5 billion. And they are putting some money in to have mental health. But you can't put those, because all you're going to end up with is a bunch of fires or worse. You know, the, in, in these housing units, if we, if we don't put quality, you know, people into those units that, that can live inside under restrictions. So, and it comes back to our, our, our drug issues and everything else. So I, I, I thank you guys for what you do. But I just, this is such a frustration level for so many people. And, and if you're out in the public a lot, you hear it a lot. That's, it's the number one topic right now, bar none. I mean, COVID, COVID's going to go away. They want this to go away too, but they don't, it was here before and it's going to be here after. So. Thanks.
Thank you Supervisor Bone. Director Beck, did you want to add anything before you go to public comment?
No, I think Emmy covered it pretty well.
Okay. Well, we do have several people online. And I just want to remind everybody, if you have called in, many of you have pressed star nine, so that is working perfectly. Turn your volume off if you're watching us on TV or on the video, because it will cause a delay, which is confusing at times. You will be asked to press star six to unmute. And then there is three minutes. And sometimes three minutes goes really fast, but it's a consistent three minutes for everyone. So if your time runs out, I apologize, but that's just unfortunately, sometimes how it goes. So I was trying to write down the numbers as the hands raised. So Ryan can help me if I'm off here. But the first two I have would be the last, whoever's got the last four digits of 7312, followed by 4335 are our first two speakers. So if you are 7312, press star six to unmute, and you will have three minutes.
Thank you Supervisor Bass and the team members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Calla Pelche Olsen. I am the Lead Youth Organizer for the Humboldt County Transition Aid Youth Collaboration. I'm also one of the founding staff people of our TAY Center here, and one of the first peer providers hired by the County of Humboldt in addition to being a nationally recognized leader in the field of peer support. I am coming today to speak of my own experience and to express opposition to the implementation of Laura's Law and the expenditure of general funds money on this pilot program. Over my many years of providing support to young people with significant mental health challenges in our communities, there are a few lessons that I have learned that work particularly well with these vulnerable populations. And at the center of those interventions are community and connection. One example being, one of the very first clients I had when I was a peer coach was one of these frequent flyers, somebody that utilized, you know, substances, had significant psychosis, and the community oftentimes had law enforcement interactions. And through the process of building relationships with this person, making them feel that they are part of a community. You know, much research supports the fact that a sense of belonging significantly increases mental wellness for people experiencing significant mental illness. And as a result of the, you know, comprehensive support and sense of community that we were able to provide through the TAY Center, we were able to partner with our HUD vouchers and get this young person in a living situation where our case managers, clinicians, and me as peer provider helped them maintain independent living. And that is just one example of the many examples of young people with significant mental illness, you know, who have been able to return to a place of, you know, wellness in our community that maybe they never had previously. You know, as research demonstrates time and time again, the more interactions with law enforcement and the judicial system increases experiences of recidivism and likelihoods of further development of other criminogenic factors. And we already have programs in our community that work. You know, the populations that receive support through the Hope Center in particular have significantly high needs.
Thank you Calla. All right, the next speaker is in the last four, 4335, followed by 4772. So if you are 4335, press star six to unmute, and you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is, hello?
I said welcome.
Hello, my name is Ira Blatt. I appeared before you approximately a month ago in support of the AOT program, listening to the prior speaker. Undoubtedly, there are some, if not many, people with significant mental illness who will be compliant with treatment on a voluntary basis. It's been my experience, however, that the family member that we have, my wife and I, has had multiple instances where she's not been compliant with treatment and been very resistant, and has had significant psychotic breaks. This is not due to the fault of the treatment that she has received, but is due to the nature of her own mental illness. She's presently in her second period of conservatorship. And she's been on conservatorship for almost a year prior. And now she's on conservatorship for entering into her second year and following a significant contact with the criminal justice system. She's not been convicted of any crime, but she has had significant contact with many members of the community, which have been adverse. She does have family and church members and other friends in the area that have been supportive of her, but it hasn't been enough. I think what is essential is looking at all of the tools that can be in the toolbox. And AOT is a significant tool for those who have found difficulties in being able to comply in the past. And I would welcome the Board of Supervisors, along with, of course, mental health, in implementing AOT in Humboldt County on a trial basis with the pilot program. The other aspect to consider is not only the savings in the behavioral health system, but also in the criminal justice system and other ancillary departments. Thank you so much.
Right, thank you Ira. Our next speaker has the last four digits of 4772, I believe. Is that, yeah, 4772, followed by 7421? So if you are 4772, press star six to unmute, and you have three minutes. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. I, I mostly have questions, but I want to say one thing is that forensic mental health of California has been doing these words to these programs where counties get together and talk about what they have done, what has worked. And there's similar counties, Nevada County as far as population. So I can get that information. And I think it's really important that we learn from and work with other counties to see what they've done that's worked. I have questions like, what if no one applies for the RFP? And what's the money for the breakdowns of the money? And I guess I would just want to also invite Emmy and Connie to spend two or three hours and ride along with Officer LaFranz or Officer Swanson, because I think some questions could be answered when you do that. That's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for that. And it's just interesting, some hands have dropped off. So if I don't call your number, we'll figure that out later. So 7421, are you still here? 7421, it's your turn. And you have three minutes and just press star six to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Wonderful. My name's Kelsey Reedy, and I'm both a youth organizer with the Humboldt County Transition Aid Youth Collaboration, as well as the Chair of the Humboldt Delinquency Prevention Commission. I'm calling to oppose this proposed assisted outpatient treatment or AB 1976. And for a lot of the same reasons that Calla spoke about, we have resources that are already working in our community. And instead of putting money into something else that, like Emmy stated, it's a tool that is already in existence. And so it's not going to be something that is going to be solving all of the concerns that the community members have, which are very valid. We have a lack of mental health services. And that's, you know, that's valid. But this tool isn't necessarily going to be what it is that we're looking for. So not only does this Laura's Law go against the DHHS principles, but it also goes against the HCTC values, and specifically that involuntary services are not partnerships. And so if we want to change, having people get put in front of a judge is not necessarily what it is that causes that change. So if we really want to have people be more engaged, then they have, it has to be voluntary services. And we also know that increased contact with the judge can increase your contact with juvenile justice system, and that also increases more likelihood of other system involvement. And so people really change because they know that someone cares about them, like what it is that happens with the Hope Center. And with the TAY Division, we really try and focus on peer relationships. And we know that that works because young people and all people who are struggling with mental health, if they have someone that cares about them, then that's going to increase their likelihood of being engaged so much more than other services. And sure, you might be able to force someone into treatment with this law, but once they are well again and they're able to make their own decisions, do you feel like you're still going to have that level of trust? And so we really think that peer support and focusing on building trust between community members and people who are providing services is much more important than being able to maybe force some people to do something that they are not in a place to do. So also forced medication increases resistance and also plays into psychosis. So paranoia about being controlled by the government is a really difficult thing for folks who are struggling with mental health. And so having another thing that they can see as a threat to them is not going to help. And then also I want to mention housing first, that it's not going to help us to force someone to go in front of a judge to seek mental health if we don't have a house for them to actually live in. And so being able to have a healthy, stable living environment is definitely what it is that we think should be a priority other than spending money on this. Thank you for your time.
Right, thank you Kelsey. All right, and the next speaker has the last four digits, the 5864, followed by 7728. So if you're 5864, press star six to unmute.
Hello. Hello, my name is Rosemary Schultz. My pronouns are she/her. I am also a youth organizer with Humboldt County Transition Aid Youth Collaboration, and also a lifelong citizen of Humboldt County. And I also, I just wanted to express how disappointed I am with the Behavioral Health Board and other bodies that haven't gotten stakeholder engagement with this process or ask people what they think about Laura's Law being implemented, people that have lived experience, people that have systemized experience. As we all know, that Humboldt County has really high ACE scores or adolescent child, or adverse childhood experience. And that is what leads a lot to mental illness, homelessness, substance use and misuse. And I don't think that the poverty, trauma, homelessness, isolation, I don't believe that those things are solved by the judicial system or taking away people's civil rights. In my own experience, I do, I used to be the street outreach worker for the Raven Project. And I'm currently doing houseless youth street outreach through the TAY Center. And I echo sentiments that more people should ride along and see what we do, like talking to people one-on-one. You'd have a lot different perspectives on how people are living their everyday life. And yeah, I also want to echo similar sentiments that we need to expand funding for the Hope Center. Because, yeah, their preventive measures and how they're trained are amazing. And I've just seen like the transformative work of peer support through the Raven Project, the TAY Center, the Hope Center, otherwise these services. And if we can implement more funding and I don't know, like more visibility, more accessibility to these services, it would make a huge impact that I don't believe that Laura's Law can. Thank you.
Thank you Rosemary. And before I call, the last two numbers that are showing, if you're listening and you haven't raised your hand to speak and you want to speak, press star nine so that we know that you were there. So we'll go to the person ending the last four of 7728, just press star six to unmute, and you'll have three minutes.
Okay, yeah, this is Tim Ash. And anyway, thank you for the opportunity to comment here. I, as Ira Blatt mentioned earlier, just want to briefly respond to the comments from a couple of the previous speakers. There's definitely some misconceptions about what Laura's Law is. The facts are, in a number of places where it's been studied, studied that putting people in front of the judge does work. The statistics are there that incarcerations drop and hospitalizations drop. So, you know, it, it works. And it doesn't work for everybody, but it, it's the only thing that works for some people, people that refuse treatment. And the other misconception is it's forced medication. The, the way it works, very briefly, is that a judge basically takes a program, a developed treatment program, and it's been done with the person in conjunction with mental health. And they basically order the person to follow it. But there's never someone, you know, held down and they get a shot. But they're ordered to comply with the treatment plan. And if they don't, the only thing that happens is they may be asked to go into a psychiatric facility to be evaluated. But it's really a lot less onerous than people think. Anyway, with that, I just want to add a couple thoughts. One is that to kind of echo what Supervisor Wilson said, I hope that there's some robust collection of data to take a look at cost savings across the departments. We know that the costs will increase for mental health, at least some costs. And, but other departments will save. And that's something to be considered in the future when the program's evaluated. The other thing is that three years may not be long enough to evaluate the effectiveness of the program. If you look at the law, there's a lot of upfront collaboration, training, development of policies and procedures that will take time, you know, working with the courts, with probation, with the DA, with public defender. All those things will take time to iron it out. So some of these costs may shift into out years. Emmy's already mentioned that that's in the plan, but it may be more so than is projected. And then finally, I would like to echo what one of the other commenter says that really need to take a look at what other counties are doing and how they're funding it. Staff believes that they're required to contract out the operation, which if it works well and is affordable is great, but there may be and is affordable is great, but there may be some other options, including backfilling some money into existing mental health programs so that they're not reduced, but that, you know, add some flexibility and maybe reductions of costs. Statewide costs are about $50,000 a person for Laura's Law annually. And I don't know if that involves screening, but anyway, it's, it is something that may be, where the cost may be reduced. Bye.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for your opportunity and urge your support to write petition.
Thanks, Tim. Sorry if I get abrupt, it's just trying to make sure everyone has the same amount of time and sometimes the three minutes goes fast. We have one hand left up unless someone else raises in the next three minutes. And that is 0151. You'll have three minutes. Okay, welcome.
Hi, Dottie Russell. As you know, for 20 years, I've been working with the homeless population in Southern Humboldt. First of all, when I first arrived, I went to work as a special ed teacher in Whitethorne, in Wiat and in Redway. And it was very sad to see that the children that were in special ed were not getting the services that they needed and they weren't getting the supports that they needed. Intervention wasn't offered the way it should have been offered. And almost, I don't know what percentage, but a lot of them ended up on the streets, on meth. And it was because the county didn't pay attention. And when I offered some suggestions, when I said what I thought was going on in terms of children being molested, all kinds of crazy things that were happening, it was pretty much ignored. And I decided that I would take my special ed credential and not use it for children anymore because I could not bear to see what was going on. So I see these people on the streets, I've seen them, you know, in hospitals and it's just, it's a crime. And then just recently with the, with the whole situation over at the Christian Science Church, you're talking about people that are not being served. You're talking about people that if we catch them early enough, that we can serve them and we can help them. And to pay money for people outside of this area to come in to tell us what they're doing outside of this area where this area is unique. It's unique as far as, we're so remote that, that the state and federal laws are not being met for special ed kids. And so you're talking about, you know, starting early on, that there's a problem that we're not addressing. And then it goes another year and another 10 years and another 10 years. And these people, I, there's some people that I know that have been living on the streets their whole adult life. The fellow, this issue about conservatorship is an issue that's specific why, when asked the fellow that was at the Christian Science Church, if he would go into the motel voucher, that he was afraid to do that. Because he was afraid that all of his rights would be taken away and he would never have any freedom whatsoever. But where has the help been for him? In 10 years, where has the help been? In 10 years, the guy that's living on the river bar, where has the help been? This is, it's unbelievable that we could do this. And the idea of, I don't know what's going on in the background, but anyway, the idea of getting two months of...
Sorry. Thank you. Don't try that. All right, there's no other hands up. And I see Supervisor Bushnell, but if it's all right with you, can I ask either Emmy or if there's something she wanted to add or clarification from what she's heard?
Well, I heard a lot of different things. I don't have a specific clarification right now, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. All right, thank you. Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you, through the chair. I wanted to respond briefly to some of the comments. And if I could have Emmy answer my question. A lot of the services that they were talking about that are already provided are in centralized areas and not in the unincorporated areas of, say Supervisor Madron's district or Supervisor Bone's or myself's district. And I think for me, with Laura's Law, I'm hopeful that it will have some outreach to those unincorporated areas that don't have as much, many services available in those remote areas.
Can I, can I respond now through the chair? So I don't know that Laura's Law as a program or service necessarily means different geography, although we as behavioral health work really hard to provide services as far out as possible. And so we do have a couple of programs that are very specific to that, including our regional services program. And so even our regular services, we try to be as community-based as possible and have done work in Southern Humboldt. But certainly if there's more need, I think that's worth a conversation.
I specifically am referring to services that have like shelters and, and more centralized areas. And I commend you guys for your services in Humboldt. I know that you do and I see you guys there. I just, I think that it's, I want to recognize that when we talk about mental health and people are responding, that it's very centralized to their area and that we need to remember that it's entirety, not just centralized, I guess is my statement that I want to make.
Right. Thank you. And I believe Supervisor Wilson, did you have your hand up? Because then it went down. I thought you had it up.
I did. And I, there's, there's a couple of things that, question about, you know, the comments that came, that we're hearing that, you know, that had, that were critical of this direction really, for the most part, came from the youth program elements of this. And so I was just kind of wondering about where, how, you know, is that, is there, is there a divide in terms of services or expectations with relationship to what we might expect in terms of outcome demographically in this way? Is, I can understand the concern about, especially in, especially youth, folks who are having experienced, you know, adverse experiences and both with mental health and homelessness and, and the real desire and want to keep folks away from the criminal justice system if it's not supportive. And if there's a chance that it just, it just enforces, reinforces a sort of cycle in terms of, in terms of that, in those institutions. And so can you address that concern a little bit with relationship to this?
So through the chair, I have a couple of thoughts and I'll say them and then if I'm not quite hitting it, let me know. I, I'm not familiar with any data that looks at the difference between, say, TAE or adults. And so I think that would be an interesting point to consider. There are adult consumers or people with mental illness who also advocate in opposition of Laura's Law. And so even though what we've heard today is, is primarily HCTC or TAE, there are, I think there are other unrepresented voices that have a similar opinion. To the point about data, there has, and comparing what other counties are doing, there has been data gathered around how AOT has been implemented across the state. And it's, it's been fairly challenging, I think, to, to really solidify that data. And so part of what's happening going forward is the state is intending to continue to collect data to really be able to have some better comparisons. I have had the opportunity to review data from other counties, including Nevada County, which is where this began, and to talk with the directors there. And it very, it really is quite varied in terms of success and ability to enroll and people who qualify and actually complete the services. And, and so then back to your, your point Supervisor Wilson, I think the data point around demographics and success based on, on age, for instance, could be a good place to look.
And then as, as a follow-up, this is more, a little bit of commentary, the, the issue of housing has come up a few times here. And I would have to say, you know, housing or being housing insecure, you know, most people who, as far as I understand, you know, this is a path towards the, these, you know, where we're getting to these outcomes where these severe issues and, and certainly there are ACEs involved and certainly there are community issues involved. But housing insecurity is, as we've seen, one of the real, is, is a huge driver for mental illness. And because, because of all of the, all the survival mechanisms that people have to, have to weigh into that, into that space if they happen to be, you know, unhoused. And, and it can be very triggering in moving into these, these behaviors and issues that we're talking about today. And so from my perspective, I strongly align myself with the, the idea that housing is, is something that we need to account for in this, this equation. And maybe not today. And I'm still, I'm still okay about with relationship to this as a pilot project, this as, as a way to collect data as to whether or not this is functional. And I think we're gonna, I mean, hopefully really see, coming out the other side of this, what are the directions that are, that are most positive. And I, and I'm hoping that we stay in contact with those folks who are advocating for those other venues, and I know you guys are. So that's all I have for today. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Before I go to Supervisor Madron, I did want to say, I saw someone else raise their hand, but public comment is closed on this item. So I'm sorry if you had missed the opportunity, but I just wanted to let you know that. Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I've said before, I support this item that's before us because as one of the speakers said, it is a tool in the toolbox. But really, you know, it's a tool that you use kind of at the end of a long process as sort of a last ditch effort to try and encourage people into treatment. And while I support that tool, if we're not doing enough on the upfront end, upstream, to help people long before it gets to that point, then it's just kind of a, we don't have a full toolbox then, you know? And the only way this is really effective is if it is sort of the last, last straw effort because we have such vibrant programs up front with HCTC, the Hope Center, the MIST program, First Five, Changing Tides. If all those things were funded, you know, a whole lot better, then we probably wouldn't need this tool very often at the, at the, the last end of it. So while I might support this tool, I really want to figure out how we increase the funding to those other programs. And I know that probably has to come from the general fund, but, you know, without doing that, we're just still, we don't have the complete picture. So I'm going to support this here today, but I, I really want to try and figure out how we get the state to provide more funds for all these preventative things we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Madron. Following up on that, I'm thinking, no, she wouldn't, well, a lot of things would be nice if the state would really help us out, especially for things that they've kind of made a, some type of a, kind of like feels like an ultimatum in some ways, and not have the funding, you know? I, I'm not sure why they don't understand at the state level that in order to provide additional services, it's really hard not to find the money from somewhere else and, you know, it's, it's problematic. I'm just curious if there is any action at the state level, or maybe this is for Emmy or maybe for Director Beck. Do we see any option for the states who are willingly deciding to do this? Do we think there's anything we can do to perhaps encourage the legislature or whoever else has the funding saying, hey, these counties stepped up even though there is no funding to it? I mean, I don't think that was their intent, but it's kind of like, okay, those of us who do step up and do it, it would just, it sure would be nice if they would think of what we may not be doing with the dollars we have. You know, I feel like it's like, it's just a problem. I mean, it's frustrating. And I, I haven't talked to other counties versus on that piece. So I'm just curious if you're hearing anything.
Well, I can say that, that yes, it's an unfunded mandate. It's been very clear and it's not the only one, right? There are a number of things that are required that are not funded. We do have a very strong Behavioral Health Directors Association that does give feedback and push back on the state and ask for funding in instances like this, or at least lift up the issue that this is something that we're incurring the cost and the resource challenges for.
And then you guys also probably, I would suspect, talk with the folks in CSAC or RCRC or... All right, thank you. So we have, we have a direction of either move forward or not. I think I've heard mostly support from this board with some, some concerns. So I'm curious if there's someone who'd like to maybe make a stab at a motion? Supervisor Wilson, I see your microphone off. Are you...
Hold on. I'll move forward with staff recommendation.
Okay. Can I see first if there's a second? Oh, wait, I think Emmy wants clarification on...
I just want to make sure it's clear that, through the chair, that it's, the language includes the resolution as, as revised by staff.
Yes, the resolution as revised by staff in the email that we received earlier. Yes.
Okay, thank you. And is there a second Supervisor Bushnell?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Just, when I see a microphone go off, it's like, no, bye.
For, for the record, can I ask that staff reiterate what that revision is so that it's clear?
Sure.
Sure, through the chair. It was a very minor change to, to, to kind of clean up language because it was referencing a document that was, that it actually was. So it was referencing another document, but really the resolution, what it was written in the resolution as it stood. Does that make, does that help? Okay.
Okay. So if there's no other questions, I see Ryan on. Ryan, would you please do a roll call vote?
Yes, sure. Thank you. Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
And Supervisor Bone?
Okay.
Thank you, Cast 50.
All right, thank you. And we look forward to hearing more in the future. All right. Yes, Supervisor Bushnell?
And I, I just really want to say thank you to Emmy and to Connie. You know, you guys presented this a while back and there was a lot of information and I just really appreciate everything you guys have done to bring this back forward and the willingness to listen to the board and the communities.
Thank you. I think we, we can all agree with the sentiments shared by Supervisor Bushnell. All right, well, gee, I guess our next item must come from Public Works because Director Mattson just magically appeared on the screen. All right, so this is an interesting one. It comes to us from Public Works and is regarding the Humboldt County Flood Control District. So this time we're going to adjourn as the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors and reconvene as the governing board of the Humboldt County Flood Control District, which I believe also has the... Should I take any of the public comment on this, Director Mattson, or just a public comment on this item? I didn't know if there's general public comment. When we do this adjournment, it confuses me sometimes.
I know you'll have to do public comment on the item, but I'll have to defer to Jefferson if there's general public comment, but I don't believe so because it's not listed on the agenda.
Okay. And he's not showing on the screen, so is that good?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
For the sake of time, can we just move this forward for Mr. Mattson and everything else? I mean, it's, it's pretty cut... I mean, it's, it's pretty cut and dry, or does it have to be read publicly?
I don't know if it needs to be read publicly. I just wanted to go through and make sure I'm not skipping a process, because it is a different thing of adjourney. I, I think you're right, that it looks fairly simple. I just wanted to make sure I didn't have to offer a regular public comment, but I don't think we have to worry about it unless Jefferson's waving his hands wildly.
Uh, Chair, you could offer a public comment, but it would have to be on something within the jurisdiction of the Flood Control District.
All right, cool. That's all I, I know we have these weird things every once in a while. I mean, different things. So at this time, Director Mattson?
Yes, the subject before you today is a request from the City of Fortina for $50,000 for post-construction monitoring and FEMA map updating, uh, for their Roman Creek, uh, Flood Control Habitat and Seismic Project. The funds for this come out of the, uh, Subzone 1.1 or 1-1 of the Humboldt County Flood Control District, where 0.6% of the properties are, property taxes within that district go to the fund to be used for these purposes. Um, note that this project has completed construction, and approximately 50 properties will come out of the mandated flood control insurance requirements with this project alone, let alone the habitat improvements. With that, Public Works recommends approval.
Thank you.
I make, I make a motion, we accept staff's suggestion.
Thank you.
Okay, kind of motion has been seconded. Um, there appears to be nobody interested in public comment on this item, so we'll go back to the board, and Ryan, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Chair, thank you. Supervisor Bone?
Yeah.
Supervisor Wilson?
Permanent.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
And Supervisor Bushnell?
Her lips said yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, passes five oh.
Okay, thank you. So we now adjourn as the Governing Board of the Humboldt County Flood Control District and reconvene as the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors. And our next item and the final one before, hopefully lunch and the closed session, is coming to us from the Sheriff's Department, and, um, it looks like we have our CIO Nielsen who's going to present that, and it's regarding temporary employment of retired and new tenants.
Thank you, Chair Bass. Uh, before your board today is, uh, the temporary employment of a retired annuitant, Brenda Reynolds, who is a senior legal office assistant, and so staff recommends that you adopt a resolution authorizing an exception to the 180-day wait, CalPERS wait period, um, and that concludes the staff report.
I make a motion, we do staff report and hope Brenda enjoyed her three hours of retirement.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Um, is there anyone on public comment? See no hands raised. We'll go back to the board, and Ryan, may we have a roll call vote?
Yes, Chair, thank you. Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
And Supervisor Bone?
Yep.
Thank you, passes five oh.
All right, well, thank you. So, um, we'll meet back here at 1:30 for the time set, so enjoy lunch. We'll see you at 1:30.
You've got some serious rustling noises there, Linda.
How's your water? It's, it's not flavored.
Yeah, it's not quietly for right.
Well, there's three of us.
Yeah, there's, actually, I think there's four.
Oh, there's Rex, there's Steve, yeah.
All right.
I see Steve on there, too.
Okay. Well, it'll take just a moment. All right, we are returning from our break.
Bang on the wall.
That's right, try that out. Well, if he misses us, he'll join us elsewhere. So, um, now we're going to our time set closed session, and I'd like to ask, um, County Council Billingsley to brief us, please?
Thank you, Chair. It's the intention of the Board of Supervisors to meet in closed session on two items of existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1. The first is Garcia versus County of Humboldt, case number DR190798. The second is Hellwings versus County of Humboldt, EEOC number 550202001658.
Thank you, and we will go to public comment, which I see no hands up, so we will go back to the board, and Linda, I think you said maybe an hour and a half? When do you, when do you think we should expect to? No, it's probably going to be watching for us, but still an hour and a half?
Yes, Madam Chair, yes.
All right, so we'll most likely come back around three. Okay, we'll see you on the other Zoom.
You on the other side.
Council, uh, Billingsley, is there any report out of closed session?
Thank you, Chair. On items L1 and L2, there is no reportable action.
All right, thank you very much. Yes, we are adjourning in memory today of, uh, two community members, longtime community members, John Groby and Carol Delbiagio. Is that right Supervisor Bone? All right, so, um, thank you all, and we will see you next week.